Okay, thank you Connie for bringing us and our mics up. I'd like to welcome everybody at this time and call this meeting to order. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flags.
You would repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, the time is for our clerk, 5:32 PM, and the date is November 10th, 2021. We've had a very eventful day in Nuñez County, and we are here in the third floor of the Nuñez County Commissioners' courtroom at 901 North Leopard, which is Nuñez County Courthouse. I do certify that Commissioner Chesney, Nandis, Modis, myself are all present, and therefore a quorum has been established. I'll move on at this time to establish that our public hearing has begun, and we're conducting this public hearing to receive public input related to the Nuñez County 2021 redistricting plan. It's nice to see new faces, and of course, nice to welcome back those who have been really just fantastic in their participation throughout the last few weeks. At this time, you know, Belinda, I do have a quick question. It does say "public comment" after. Don't we always have public comment during our public hearing?
Well, that's the public comment for the meeting portion.
Oh, got it.
But you're having your hearing.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's for the next piece. I was like, okay, normally we do that. Well, I've asked Belinda to share with me the public comment roster, and we'll do that, but we have Jose Garza representing us in Nuñez County here. He's going to share updated information. But Jose, if you don't mind, before you do that, I'm gonna, just because it makes more sense since I've thumbed through them, but I signed myself up because as I looked through all my mail, I don't know how many there are, but they're all very quick, and I just, I feel like it's very important for everyone to take notice that I think we've listened to the people, and let me tell you why. "Hi Barbara, please keep the sessions for redistricting open to the public. It is the right and moral thing to do. Thanks, Dr. Nancy Vetta. Please open the process to the public. Maps should not be drawn behind closed doors." Teresa Klein. "Honorable Judge Canales, please afford us a fair, transparent, and impartial redistricting process with public input. Let's show the people how it should be conducted." Thank you, Julie Rogers. "Hello, as a leader, you have the power to give our community a fair process for the public to bring their input. We deserve a fair process for redistricting. Love." It just says Sanchez with a big heart. "We want a fair and transparent, impartial redistricting with public input." This one's not signed. "Please, we need a fair, transparent, and impartial process with public input." "Dear Judge Canales, thank you for supporting Fair Maps and for considering an IRC." Stephen Schultz. "Dear Judge Canales, please support an IRC and a transparent redistricting process." Paula Brighton. "Please vote to establish independent redistricting commission for Nuñez County." Sylvia Whitworth. This one has to be one of my favorites. "Dear Judge Canales, I can't vote yet, but when I can, I want it to be counted. Maps should be drawn in public." Bravo, Lisa. I'm sorry, not Lisa. Bravo, Leah Ortiz. "I feel public input is important. We need these meetings to be accessible to the public. We need public input behind, I'm sorry, we need public input hearings for maps to be drawn. Decisions that affect us should not be made without us and should not be made behind closed doors. We need public input hearings for maps to be held and advertised throughout the community. Maps should be drawn in public." These are not signed. "Dear Judge Canales, the need for public input for maps to be held and advertised throughout our community is so significant, maps should be drawn in public with work sessions. We need impartial redistricting process with a public input so it can be fair and transparent." Thank you. "We need public input for redistricting, particularly with our communities that are affected. Please consider a nonpartisan independent redistricting commission for maps." Judge Canales, "Thank you so much for everything you do for our community. Please ensure that our local redistricting process is fair, transparent, guided by public input, and preferably with an impartial commission. Hope that you are considering..." Well, we'll leave all that out. That was just a personal note to her. Karen Bryant. "Judge Canales, in the interest of having a fair and transparent and impartial redistricting process, our county needs the following: public input, advertised throughout the county with hearings, maps to be drawn in public, and a fair and transparent redistricting process. Signed, Neil McQueen." "I'm writing regarding redistricting. The way redistricting has been held is not transparent and fair in the past. I ask that there is an impartial redistricting process with public input. As a member of this community, our voices, input is crucial." We need to have public input for drawing of maps, not private entities draw maps for us. "Maps should be drawn in public work sessions, not behind closed doors. Community input sessions on maps." Signed, Brandon Marks. "County Judge Canales and Commissioners, we need an independent, nonpartisan redistricting commission for maps." And finally, the last one. "We need public input hearings for maps to be held and advertised throughout the county. Gerrymandering is evil and must be stopped." Jason A. Post. I share these with you as an important reflection of our community. Perhaps some of you are here, I know that from recognizing your names and having you been a part of our public hearing process, and some could not be here with us, but their voices will be heard, and so I just want to say, and I'll recognize him, thank you Connie, I just want to say that I appreciate each and every piece of mail that I receive, and I always try to find a way to give it a forum, and it seems to me that we've listened, that we did provide the public hearings, we did advertise, we've given an opportunity for all of you to come out again today, and I just thought that you should know that our people are listening, they're watching, and they are holding us accountable. So Commissioners, I'll share this with all of you and just ask that if you also have any that you want to share, that you do so now or at any time during this public hearing. Chris Garcia, you have your hand up. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for the opportunity to attend this public hearing virtually. I've taken a look at the, I'm from, I'm in Bishop, I'm from Bishop. I've taken a look at the maps, and I noticed that map BB has the west side of Bishop in precinct one, I believe, which is different from the way it currently falls into precinct two. If I'm seeing that correct, I would hope that in any kind of discussions, maybe you can provide some insight as to why Bishop has been cracked like that. I understand other parts of Nuñez County are getting cracked and packed, and I just would like to understand why my town is going to be cracked. And if anyone out there isn't familiar with that term, that language, that's what people do when they kind of gerrymander, is they crack and pack areas in counties, and just like some insight on that if possible. Number two, the Princeton gerrymandering project graded Texas redistricting as from C through F, and depending on how you answer my first question, I'll come in with my own grade, you know, A through F for Bishop for that crack. Lastly, until you get an independent redistricting committee, I'd be more inclined to give a better grade for your redistricting, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so now, if it's all right with the audience...
Judge, could I just comment on that? Would it be appropriate to?
Yes, sure.
Was this public? I can't remember where we are.
No, you're fine. In that way, Mr. Garcia can get ready.
Yeah, no, I don't know how long he's going to be on. I noticed that on a couple of these two or one of these, I don't think Bishop should be split, and I doubt, at the end of the day, we'll probably end up doing that, so me personally, I don't think, in fact, you know, I looked out there and thought, you know, you could even put Driscoll in with Bishop because they're kind of communities and interests and stuff like that, so the very last thing I want to do is split Bishop.
I don't think it's split.
And I don't, I didn't, I don't know if that's what this does or not, but I want to...
That wasn't my belief. I don't think it's split.
We're going to let Mr. Garcia, since he asked a good question and you're kind of piggybacking on that question, we'll let Mr. Garcia answer that question for Mr. Garcia.
But yeah, I think that needs to be answered while he's on because he may not have time to stay the whole time.
Yeah, no, we'll make certain. Mr. Garcia, would you, I know you have a presentation to give us an update on the maps, but also in that presentation, would you please address the comment that came forth regarding Bishop?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We just want to remind you to use a mic because everybody online needs to hear you.
Yes.
And then after Mr. Garcia, my intention is to go through our roster here and then be able to visit with you, the public.
Good evening. So let me begin by responding to the question about Bishop, and it wasn't done intentionally, but it is noted in the list of jurisdictions that Bishop is divided, as noted, and I think, and those of you that know the county better than me, what we were doing between Plan AA, which does not split Bishop, and Double B, which in fact does split Bishop, is we were bringing Precinct 36 to balance out the population to a lower level than what Plan AA had, and I believe that Bishop is located in two voting precincts, 36 and 102 is, and I'm guessing now because I haven't pulled it up on the map to see precisely, but that's the difference between AA and Double B that we made in that region of the county. So I am assuming then that Bishop is between 36 and 102 because 102 stays in District 2, but 36 moves into District 1 or Commissioner Precinct 1. So I believe that that's how that happened. We can certainly look at putting Precinct 102 as well into Precinct 1, and that might take care of the division of Bishop. And my guess is that the population that we're talking about in that move will not affect and may have a positive effect on the overall deviation, and we can certainly take a look at that, and if directed to, we can make that final move. For the presentation, I don't have a lot, Judge and Commissioners. For today's presentation, what I wanted to say is that we've presented two additional plans and explain why we've presented those two additional plans. Plan Double B Modified. Double B seemed to be the consensus choice from the folks that spoke at the hearing, and other than this critique that we're getting now, there wasn't really anything negative about Plan Double B that was mentioned by the Commissioners or the folks here. But the recommendations were that the University Precinct be moved into Commissioner Precinct 3, and that some balance for that be done the other way. And so we did that with Plan BB, so the University would now then be in Commissioner Precinct 3. I did briefly look at Tim's critique of Plan BB Modified, in which he pointed out that there would be a landlock problem if we did that. And actually, it was pointed out to me after the meeting yesterday because I had the same concern by Mr. Sines, that actually there's a road that runs along the edge of Precinct 91 on the side that would connect, therefore, the, there would be no landlock. There is a road that connects those two areas of Precinct 4. So that's what Plan BB Modified does. Plan CC Modified was in reaction to the questions that Commissioner Chesney had about why Plan CC had such a large deviation, and again, we tried to use that same pattern of moving the University into Commissioner Precinct 3 and moving some of the south side precincts, 124 and part of 32, back into 4, where they had been originally. And so that was the purpose of that move. What that does is it raises the Democratic numbers incrementally in Precinct 3 by moving the University Precinct into Commissioner Precinct 3 and removing those south side precincts, putting them back into Commissioner Precinct 4. I know that that's a little bit convoluted in terms of the explanation, but that's essentially what we've done with those two plans. And again, I can look very quickly here to see the population, if I'm correct, about 102. I can check to see the population of 102, and I can do the math here to see what that would do if we put 102 together with, in Commissioner Precinct 1 to unify Driscoll, I'm sorry, Bishop. And the final thing that I would say, and we're still working on this a little bit, Commissioner Chesney and I spoke before the meeting, and he wanted to see one other adjustment made if it was possible with regard to Plan A. And with regard to Plan A, Commissioner, I've done, I've got my office working on the computer. I don't have a result back, but in terms of doing, putting pencil to paper, it in fact does what you suggested it would do. So the deviation, if we, and what that entails is moving 124 from 3 to 4, therefore increasing the population of 4. There were a few other changes that we had to make, but they're pretty minor, I think just in terms of keeping the plans contiguous, et cetera, but the total top to bottom deviation drops from that 9.6% that we had presented in Plan CC down to 6.13, so substantially lower than what the other plans had for Plan, either Plan A or Plan CC. Thank you. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, great. So we're going to ask a few questions here, I'm thinking. I can see somebody thinking. Would you like to ask him some questions?
Yeah, Mr. Garcia, I just, I've never, I've never noticed that the Bishop area being divided. I don't know, remember what kind of population 36 or 102 have, whether, I mean, I hate to, I don't hate to get rid of Bishop, but if it means putting it together, because I don't want, I'm Mr. Garcia, I don't want to split nobody up either.
Sure.
If we put them together and it goes to Precinct 1, we'll let it be, but I just, I don't like, I don't want to go back and say we split them up just because you're going to get a certain amount of votes.
So let me ask you, so that if you know, if I'm correct about voting precinct 102 being the rest of Bishop, do you know? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Precinct 102?
Uh huh.
Is that the rest?
He's asking if that is, represents the rest of Bishop.
Is it 36 and 102?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's only two.
So it's, part of it's in Precinct 36 and the other is 102.
Certainly, Karen, can we confirm that?
Judge, if I could ask to be allowed to go back into the office so I can look at the data?
Absolutely.
And you can take public comments or...
Absolutely, and please feel free to use my office.
Thank you.
Yes, let me move to public comment for those of you that signed up, for anybody online, just use your virtual icon of the hand if you also would like to make public comment, and Mr. Garcia will be back here shortly. At this time, the very first person I show is Ms. Elisa Gonzalez. Welcome.
Thank you. Do I have to turn anything on?
You're good.
No ma'am, we hear you just fine.
Okay. Judge Canales, Commissioners, my name is Elisa Gonzalez. I live in Precinct 2. To begin with, I commend you all for opening up the redistricting process in Nuñez County to public input. I know that you all had your first look at the maps almost at the same time that we were seeing them for the first time, so thank you for taking the time to open this up to input. Right off the bat, I support map BB as the most workable one. I use the word "workable" because I truly feel that picking a map is not the end game. There are too many variables in the process that need to be addressed. In particular, the rushed process really bothers me. You all could do nothing without the information from the legislators who themselves rushed through enormously important decisions based on the census, which also was rushed through due to the impact of COVID-19 and an administration that did not want to compensate for that impact by extending the deadline. I worked for the census. It was chaotic, antiquated, and the pressure to do it quickly did nothing to help and endangered those who were going door to door. The impact of the redistricting process of all that rushing is serious. There is acknowledgement that there is an undercount, and therefore, the information we have is faulty. 10 years is too long to be stuck with faulty maps that don't reflect the enormous rapid changes that our society is undergoing. Changing the census is not possible, but what is possible is taking advantage of the findings of Lulak versus Perry. It's so important that the court begin to work on the process for future redistricting right now. Creating an independent redistricting commission appears to be a very viable way of doing that. El Paso has moved admirably in that direction. In summary, I recommend the Commissioners' Court begin the process right now to establish an IRC for future redistricting, that the chosen redistricted map continues to be monitored as to effectiveness and reviewed in 2024, and that the court keep communities of interest intact, keep cities and towns intact, continue to welcome public input, to honor transparency, and continue to be a responsive court. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Sylvia Campos. And Julie Rogers, you'll follow.
Good evening, County Judge, Commissioners. This is my first time here to make public comment, and I am grateful for that privilege. I'm also grateful to see so many people here. This, I'm going to have to say, part of that is a testament to the, even though I am a member of the League of Women Voters, I do not speak for the League, but I believe a lot of those comments that you received was because of the process that we hold, our organization, which is voting. Voting is sacred, and our organization works extremely hard to make sure that we do get heard, and I know it's not your fault for the rush process, and I think that's our, I mean, I know that's my main objective, the whole thing, rush, 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 and for the next 10 years, that is just too long. So I am here in support for my fellow citizens and my community. I think we all hopefully have this in mind, which is the community comes first, the community. You know, I know that businesses are important, but people, people should come first. So I'm just, I hope that you'll keep our, you know, our public, our community involved and transparent, and I really do appreciate what you have at least done at this point because we still have to continue with the city, which is the process to be transparent. One other thing I would like to add is, as we're making these changes, it sure would be great if we had, you know, someone actually moving some of the things that we're suggesting and to see how it actually looks, you know, live, so that would be great if we could do that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm on that train too. One of the things we need is a smart board here in the courtroom. That's something to work on. We'll hear from Julie Rogers now. And followed, following Julie will be Lamont Taylor.
Hello, my name is Julie Rogers. I live in Precinct 1 downtown. Good evening, everyone. I agree with many others that democracy is a participatory sport, and I'm proud to say that we have all played the game well so far here in Nuñez County by trying to make the local redistricting process open, fair, and transparent. I look forward to seeing the final maps and how we all scored according to the Fair Maps rules of the game. Final maps should not violate the U.S. Constitution or the Voting Rights Act, and it does not look like that will happen. Final maps should split cities, towns, and communities of interest up as little as possible, but include rural areas in more than one precinct for stronger representation. Due to a probable U.S. Census undercount, final maps should not exceed a total population deviation of 5% to make up for the undercount. None of the proposed maps were horrible, but not all followed these simple rules. For that reason, the most fair maps are Plan BB and Plan BB Modified, and the worst maps are the ones with the least change and a population deviation over 9%. That 9% will easily increase to 10% over 10% unconstitutional. Therefore, please do not consider Plan A or Plan CC. We wouldn't have been able to play the game right had it not been for the Nuñez County Commissioner Court staff who supplied us with all the equipment and necessary tools to participate, and I am most grateful for them and their public service. It would have been remarkable under normal circumstances, but you all went above and beyond during an ongoing pandemic and through an almost impossible time constraint. We also could not have participated without the willingness of the judge and the Commissioners to try to include genuine public input in the process to ensure that was fair, equitable, and transparent, and I would like to acknowledge them for doing that. I also look forward to reporting it to other Fair Maps advocates in the state and country. It was by far a better process than the Texas State Legislature, and it is much appreciated. I hope that the court will continue to get public input on the maps and that you will still consider establishing an independent redistricting commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamont Taylor, followed by Mr. Tim Dowling. And if any of you want to go in a different order, just let me know. I'm just calling as I have seen them posted on my sign-in sheet. Good evening.
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners' Court. My name is Lamont Taylor, and I reside at 522 Hancock Apartment 109 in District Precinct 1. 1. I am here today to, first of all, commend you and your staff and the Commissioners' Court for this effort of providing us an opportunity, old school, and I call it citizen participation, so giving us this opportunity for citizen participation, to participate in this thing we call democracy. So I'm going to be brief, and I'm gonna be gone. First, I would like to commend the staff and its work on the modification on BB. I am with the gentleman in, in 102 who had noticed the split of that precinct out there in, in Bishop, and I spoken to you earlier about the tweaking. I knew there's gonna be some tweaking of these maps, and this is one of the reasons why I talked about tweaking the last time I, I presented this. And the third thing, the last thing I want to talk to you about is basically, we need to continue to press for an IRC, Independent Redistricting Committee, and hopefully, you can put that on your agenda in January of 2022. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Dowling. Following Mr. Dowling will be Ms. Catherine Oler.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I don't have printed notes to go from, and I had jury duty this morning. It took up half the day, and then I found out about the new maps, and it's been a busy afternoon. I want to commend, also commend the court and the, and the staff how you've conducted this. I wish the Texas Legislature was taking notes from you, but unfortunately, I can't do that. I wanted to just visit with you about a couple topics. So the question in my mind is, as I told you on Monday, that I think map BB is the best one to go. It's got the smallest deviation. I think if we might make an adjustment for Bishop, that probably would be a good idea. I hadn't heard that before, that probably is a good idea. But what I did now is I said, okay, compare modified BB to BB, and modified BB increases the population, increase 150% from 2.61 to 3.92, and so you have to say, well, why is that? The other thing that, in redistricting, I think you want to have is that boundaries contiguous and not produce any bizarre results. And Precinct 91 has moved from Precinct 4 to 3, that's the university. That makes 4 not contiguous, and it also puts 65 surrounded by 3. I heard the comment about a road being there, but nobody lives on a road, so I don't really think that really solves it. So I would say comparing BB and modified BB, stick with BB. So then I said, okay, BB is my guy. How's it compared to modified CC? And that one has a larger population deviation, 2.61 goes to 6.87, so 263% larger. And modified CC versus CC just moves existing overpopulation in 3 and 4, but does not address at all the underpopulation in 1 and 2. Also, it leaves Precinct 4 as the most populous. That's the area of town that is gonna grow the fastest. So if we're gonna make a most populous precinct, Precinct 4, whatever that precinct is, don't make that your fastest-growing one, because it's gonna get worse over time as we get close to the next census 10 years down the road, down the road. And this map also makes orphans of Precinct 65 and 92A once again 3 surrounded by 4. So I did have a minor suggestion for improving map BB. Precinct 125 is already split, so if we move 1,301 people, assuming that's feasible, but close there as we can do it, out of 4 to 2, and 2 will have a 0 deviation, and 4 will only be 200 people overpopulated. And all three of the options in the memo I sent to you yesterday, yesterday's memo, are better on the over-under issues than BB. But I really have come to respect Mr. Garza's opinion. If he says that's not a good idea for some reason, I'd be delighted to hear that. So in summary, what I would ask you to do is to adopt BB, possibly with a Bishop modification, maybe with the slight modification I just mentioned, and then if you say, I don't want to do that, I would urge you to do modified BB because it has the next smallest population deviation. And then I don't want to forget what I asked you to do on Monday, which is to hold a hearing on January 26th or as soon as possible thereafter, so that we have more time for community input. You can compare the size of this crowd two days later to what we had two days ago, and I think it's at least doubled. So you could expect that if more time goes by, you're gonna get more community input, and that's what we need to have. It would also be helpful if we do, do that, that we have overlays on the maps, so I can't tell where Bishop is, I can't tell where Driscoll is. It'd be great if somebody put those on the maps, they'd be very, very helpful. And so whether you're happy with the map we end up with this evening or later this week, let's put on the agenda, let's get that community input. If the input says we're happy with the maps, great, we'll keep them for 10 years. If we're not happy with the maps, we'll change them now for 2024, we're stuck with these maps for 2022, but regardless, don't put the 2031 court in the same box that you're in. Let's adopt a process. Let's adopt an independent redistricting commission with the only question being, do we implement that in 2022 or 2030? So those are my remarks, and let me thank you again for the open, transparent process that you all have shown here, and very grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'll call on Catherine Oler at this time and ask Orlando Sims to be ready and follow Ms. Oler.
Thank you, Judge Canales and Commissioners Hernandez, Gonzalez, Maris, and Chesney. Thank you for this opportunity to speak again to the Nuones County Commissioners' Court. My name is Catherine Oler, and I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Corpus Christi. During the last several months, I, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Corpus Christi area, as well as individual citizens of Nuones County, have advocated for an inclusive, transparent, and fair redistricting process. We have shared the impacts this redistricting can have for all of us. We've shown you small ways and big ways the court could make this happen positively. Now, in the last seven days, you, all of you, along with Mr. Garza, have worked to draw precinct maps that are more fair, that are more representative of our democracy, and that are being achieved through a more transparent and inclusive process. Think about it, seven days to establish district boundaries that may be in place for the next 10 years. We urge you to adopt an inclusive, fair, and transparent process by working toward three things. Implementing a redistricting timeline that allows informed and impactful public comment. You have launched that. Providing genuine and meaningful opportunities for public comment. Ensuring transparency throughout the redistricting process. You're getting there. Check.
Small check.
Small check. We have shared our recommendations for implementing these three things, and you have shown them to be achievable in the limited number of days mandated for this process. We commend you, Judge Canales, Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Maris, and Commissioner Hernandez, and Mr. Garza, too, for making this redistricting process as participatory and transparent as possible, given the time restraint. We believe that these actions will contribute to better, fair maps, engage citizens, and improve public trust and confidence in our democracy. Once your decision is made, we encourage you to conduct a redistricting debrief, to note what worked, what didn't, what could be done better. This debrief can serve as the foundation of an even more transparent, inclusive, and fair redistricting process for the future, either this decade or in 2031. And importantly, it can be a preliminary roadmap and one that we urge for moving to an independent redistricting commission now, particularly before the next redistricting cycle. This has all been hard work, and I think a plan for the future would help alleviate some of that. Today, we are asking you to vote yes on Plan BB, but agree that Bishop should not be cracked. It best serves the citizens of Nuones County based on theirs and our input. It has the least population deviation, fewer county town splits, and better serves our rural communities of interest. We believe Plan BB assures that Nuones County will be an even better place to live for all of its residents in the next 10 years. Thank you all for your hard work, and thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this process.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we'll hear from Orlando Sims, and Orlando will be followed by Ms. Sandy Boatwright. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here. I'm here to put on the record that I'm here to support Plan AA. We live in a great country, and it's good that we all have a voice, and I appreciate having the freedom to be able to say my choice, but I'm gonna make it short and sweet, I support Plan AA.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll hear from Ms. Sandy Boatwright.
My name is Sandra Sturba Boatwright, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm basically a neophyte in this process. I've attended this time for the first time, and I've learned a lot. I have to tell you, I admire the court and everybody here because of what has been done so quickly. Again, I understand the deadlines are certainly not your fault, and you would love to have them extended even more than we would, I'm sure, because I suspect you all are putting in double time or triple time at this point. However, I want to applaud everything you have done. I was here when we discussed this meeting and other things, and I am appreciative that you not only set the meeting after hours, that you got the word out, and you are taking in the public comment, which is so important in this process. While I applaud these efforts, I will join the rest of everybody who has spoken, and unfortunately, I can't say I'm going to give you any new insight or information, but I do think that once this process is completed and we have maps, a deliberative retrospective review of the maps needs to be accomplished, because we do need to make sure that in the rush that we have been placed in, that we have the fairest maps possible. Under these circumstances, I want to add my voice to Mr. Dowling's because I have not been able to figure out half the time where these lines on these maps go. I would love overlays. I think overlays are extremely helpful, and there are parts of Nuones County with which I am not familiar, and that would really help me be able to understand exactly what's happening. I can see the shapes. I can see salamanders where there's salamanders and squares where there's squares, but I can't figure out if a, a community of interest is being split. In essence, I'm not going to advocate a specific map because I have a feeling that by the time the vote is actually taken, there'll be a whole different map to be voted on, but I do want to advocate that communities of interest are preserved. I think that is primarily important in conjunction with keeping the population deviations down, and I would simply ask all of you to, who are far better at this than I will ever be, to take those things into account and try to keep our communities of interest preserved, and to, I think Mr. Dowling's comment about Precinct 4 was well-taken, to make sure that we can try to keep these as constitutional as possible throughout the entire 10 years that they will be in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna recognize, we have an online comment, and it's Ms. Barbie Baker, and we'll invite you to unmute at this time. You have the floor.
Good evening. Apologies, I could not be there in person, as so many, so many are in the same situation. Work, 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 work is what we do. So I appreciate the opportunity to share with you via Zoom and you having this option available for individuals. I would like to express my input that Plan A is, is the, is my choice, my, my voice that I would like to share. I think that, that that one is going to be the easiest to tweak if needed, and so thank you very much for your time, and God bless you all.
Thank you so much. I do want to extend another opportunity. If anybody did not have the chance to sign up, and I took it too soon, this would be your chance to raise your hand and let me know your name, and we can fill it out for you. Steve Ray, I'll go ahead and call on you, and then I'm gonna go ahead and take this back into the audience. Could you? Thank you. In fact, if you wouldn't mind, would you fill it out for me as well for, for Mr. Ray? Steve, we'll go ahead and let you proceed, and then for those of you, Ms. Sands is walking around, please make sure you sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I'd just like to start off by saying how much I appreciate the hard work that you've all done, both the county judge and the county commissioners, and the person that you hired to do the redistricting process. As we all know, it's probably one of the most controversial processes you can have, whether it's locally or in the state. What I would like to say is that I support Plan A, and the reason for that is I think it is a, a, a map that can be tweaked and done the correct way. The other thing that I would request on this is that, trying to get into, you know, one thing I like about Nuones County is that we're kind of a purple county, and we have Democrats, and we have Republicans, and we have a lot of people that'll work together. So what I would like to see on those maps by, by district is what the political outlay is of that area. I know I saw some on one of the others that came to me and by email, and so before I think the, what we would look at in the, for each of the precincts is I would like to see, for example, in Commissioner Maris's precinct, what is, what is the outlay of the, of the political spectrum there? I noticed that he did that once on the Biden, on the Biden numbers, and so I think that that would be very beneficial to all of us to be able to look at that. I'm a very big supporter of making sure that everyone is represented, and I think that having a map that shows what's happening in those precincts is good, and I'm also very supportive of having something that is, you know, I'm, I'm happy with two Democratic precincts and two Republican precincts. And if you look at the numbers of the county over the last three or four cycles, it's been a very, very close cycles for all of them, both Democrats and Republicans. I think over the past four cycles, Democrats have been ahead one time, Republicans have been ahead three, but it's also been a very small margin each time. So what we really want is we want a county that will work together and do what's best for everyone, but I think that we also have to have a county where we can see how each of those precincts are aligned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'll call on Miguel Brusenio at this time. Renee Sands, you'll be following.
Thank you, Judge. Barbara Canales and commissioners, honorable commissioners, fellow patriots, thank you for being here in this highly democratic process that we are now witnessing and being part of. I'm a United States Navy veteran of 20 years. I served honorably. I defended our democracy those 20 years, and now I got a chance to enjoy it, being here with you all. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to support Plan A. I believe that this is the least complicated, the least painful, and for some reason, in my mind, you know, if I was assigned to do these maps, the most common sense that I would start with would be A before I start putting any other letters next to it. So I think that Plan A is the one that makes more sense to B, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. We will hear now from Renee Sands. Just give her a moment to clean our mic, and then Peggy Duran will follow.
Commissioners, Judge, thank you for allowing us to speak here on these final days as we come to an end. I really wish my Republican friends would have been very passionate about those issues with the state legislature, because they ripped us to pieces. I mean, you wanna talk about communities of interest being ripped up, that's what happened up there. That's what happened up there, but now it's a little different. So that's that part. Last time I had advocated for A, Double A, but after looking at the modifications, I think Double B modified is an actually pretty good plan. So, so from, from my end of it, from being an advocate for Double A, I'm for Double B modified. I'm certainly appreciative of the mapmaker here for listening the last time and making certain modifications and I can see them now on this map and I'm very, very grateful. And I just think that it shows one thing, when people become active and they become involved and they study, do their homework, they can make some changes, even if it's small changes, they can make those changes. And I think by coming up here the last time, I was able to at least influence one of those precincts or maybe two. So I would hope when you vote that it be for Double B modified. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Peggy Duran.
And thank you so much for doing this. I have been watching the emails fly back and forth for the past month and seeing just how much work has been going on, how much thought has been put into this and the fact that you have been responsive in a way that I felt was just lacking with some of the other public comment periods that have happened where I felt it was more like the line from My Fair Lady, "They listen very nicely then go out and do precisely what they want." This has been amazing to see and I'm so glad to be a part of this. We've seen that the, the, the level of, of fervor, of threats to our elected officials, I mean, around the country has been dismaying and to see us work this way has been so hopeful. I'd, I'd like to see this continue. Twenty-one states so far have adopted the independent redistricting committees and several areas are working on them and some of them are nonpartisan, some of them are bipartisan. I know that we can make this work and I really look forward to having that happen. As far as the maps go, I'm kind of partial to the BB and hope that we can go forward and just put together Bishop so that that is not divided. And thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Ms. Duran. Well, I'll just make a few comments and open it up to my colleagues here. I just want to say, I too relish the moment of seeing our courtroom full. I have gone through many public hearings for incredibly important issues and it always feels terrible when the empty, when there are so many empty seats. And I ask myself, what more can we do? COVID-19 had only, not even a silver, because we don't say anything silver lining about it, but it had at least sort of a gray overtone lining and that is we've gone virtual. And so despite the fact that we only had a couple of online comments, people can watch our proceedings in a way they could not do before and they can participate in a way that they could not be conducted before. So I'm very proud of that. I also want to thank staff who are not only here after hours, including the staff that you see here in the courtroom, but the staff you don't see behind the scenes. And also I wanted to comment that I think the overlays are a great idea and I think we all agree that whether you're a Cornaki fan or whether you're a, trying to think of who the other guy is that does such a great job on the maps, you know, where they move them all around.
John King.
Who's the other one?
John King.
John King, yeah, he's great too. You know, the, the point is, is that it helps because the detail is very, is very instructive. So I would say that I agree with you and that I'm absorbing everything you're saying so that we can continue to make the process even more transparent and really help us get to that level of granular detail that you're asking for. I also would like to make some comments because I too am learning this process and I do favor the exploratory committee to form an independent redistricting committee. I will say that I believe a working group is probably needed before we actually vote on a commission and let me tell you why. The more I learn, the more I understand that a real IRC, like the one El Paso has, actually had a real funding mechanism. They have to have real software. They have to have a real, if you're going to make the commission have any integrity and any hope of success, success at all, it's going to have to be funded, there has to be structure. It's, it's not complicated in the sense of you can't figure it out, it's just complicated in that you just shouldn't raise your hand and say yes without all of us understanding what does it mean, how will it work, who will be placed on there, how will we place people, what is the duration and how will we fund it? And so I would just like to say to my fellow commissioners that the people that have really represented Nuasis County, both far and close by, from country to coast, I think we actually have an expert. I asked Jose Garza about and what his knowledge was about IRCs. He has a tremendous knowledge, as one might expect with his CV and, and background. And so I would like to suggest that we do our business today first and we concentrate on that business and that very quickly we might consider forming a working group that might consist of some of you in the audience and, and that that working group bring back to the court for our new year by working with Mr. Garza, the details and framework for our consideration. I am very interested, but I also know that there is too much that we don't know yet about how this would actually work. And so I think that that's a really good step and I'm a fan of checking all the boxes. At this point, I'd like to share the floor with my colleagues. You may answer any of the questions or concerns that you've heard today, including comments, or please feel free to go back to Mr. Garza's modified maps. I think I count nine maps that he's prepared for us. This is a choice. Everything in democracy is about choices. I just want to say that the reason you saw so many maps is because he listened. It's not that he had a, an agenda, is that, nor even that there was an agenda up here. It's that there was a, hey, what about that? Could you show me what that looks like? What if we moved that?
And that we've all done in public, right?
And we've done it in public.
The suggestions I made were on the phone the other night when everybody was here. So I think that's real important to.
So I just want you to know, the maps are not lettered in a way that reflects anything but the way the, it came about, right? In, in order of time. So I just want to give you a little bit of, of comfort there that if you saw AA or BB modified, it's because the commissioner might have said, well, what about if we move this? Or a comment from the, from the audience. So anyway, we have a host of maps. We've provided them and of course, Mr. Garza is going to share what he learned when he stepped out of the room and we want to give him that time. But Commissioners, Hernandez, would you make some comments, sir?
Thank you, Judge.
Just, can I jump just real quick?
Yes, sir.
On the, I think if you remember too, excuse me, Commissioner, we did make a motion, I think, to bring this back in January, so it's already on the, it's already been passed by this court to bring this back in January to start doing exactly what you said because I think with the holidays coming up, all due respect, any sooner than that would be tough. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we had already passed that motion to have exactly that.
And like I said, my only tweak on that, Commissioner, is that a work group be established and we can maybe, you know, the work group that leads you to the commission and that's, that's how you get an understanding of what's going on. That way, and I don't think a work group would cost any money. That's my opinion. I think that would be a free look at how to do a commission, which if you look at El Paso is, you know, a million dollar funding.
Yeah, and Mr. Dowling said he could do that for way less than that. He told me.
I know, I know he did. I know, that's why, I'm just throwing it out that the.
I don't know where that's going to come from.
And I mean, I think we would all agree that Mr. Dowling should serve on this working group.
Yeah.
Okay, let me go back now, Commissioner Hernandez.
Sorry, Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you, Judge. I just want to thank all of you for being here, taking interest in all this, the way it works, our community should work. And like I said, the first time, majority rules and I myself like the BB map, but the only thing that I would like to see changed, I don't, I don't think Bishop should be broken up. Let it be the way, the way it is. It's worked for Nuasis County, it's worked for the citizens of Bishop. So, you know, we could do that, I'd be happy as a bird. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Modis.
Thank you, Judge. This has definitely been a process and a lot faster than I would have liked. I think we all agree, we would have preferred to have more time to spend really looking at this. The numbers here tonight, just participating, either just observing or commenting is encouraging and I think shows that had we had more time, we definitely would have had even more people participating. But, you know, thanks to, thanks everyone who provided their, their comments to me directly through emails, phone calls and other messaging. I, you know, I think, like, like many things in politics, there's not even one particular thing I, I favor over as far as the map version, right? I, I think I find the favor of, of a lot of those, those items that are put in there and some are not what I would expect, right? But I think we're going to have a chance to perhaps modify and try to get us to a map. I don't remember who, who mentioned earlier that, you know, this map version may be different, but we're doing it here in open, we're not going to close session for any reason. We're going to discuss it and you're going to hear it and you're going to, it's going to be based on what you've shared with us and other input that we've had. I would like to think that this would be a quick motion and, and I can almost guarantee that this is not going to be that simple, but I don't think that it should, right? Because each of you are bringing a little bit different perspective and even though you may all agree that there's a particular map that you favor, there still may be some modifications that you individually would want to see. And so I, I don't think we can do that. I'm not tricking myself into thinking that will happen, but I, I do think that we were going to need to put some time and effort into it this evening. Lot of motions to make and amendments to make on, on these map versions and then ultimately we'll, we'll end up with something. But, you know, bear our, our process because this is true democracy in action. You know, there is no agenda, there has been no deals been made. This is something that says, we're going to work it out as you're, as you're listening. And so maybe we'll notice by the gasp or the thumbs up or whatever that we're going in the right direction, but we, we want to try to get this right as, as possible and that means representing and reflecting the community that, like Mr. Ray mentioned, you know, we are a pretty evenly split community when you look at partisan elections and how people have won by party and you look at that on a countywide basis. And so I think that is something to consider. I, I, I hear and feel what my good friend Renee has said about, hey, the process in Austin was very different, but I, I, you know, I want to say in that the two wrongs don't make a right, right? If you feel that there was a motivation in Austin to be partisan, then don't ask us to do the same because then it's just, it's just because you agree with it, it's okay? No. I think we need to see a map that's very reflective of the community. So I'm, I'm going to listen to my colleagues up here, I've been making notes every night that we've been up here and try to account for all of your concerns and your input, but I think that, you know, there will be some chance for modifications. I hope that we have that because I still think that there's some communities there that need to be combined, right? One way or the other, whether it's shifted into one precinct, one commissioner's boundaries or the other, but I'm, I'm looking forward to that and I hope that you will bear with us. I hope it does not take too long, but, but democracy, I think, is worth it. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chesney? Or Gonzalez, either one, either one.
No, go ahead. I just want to say again, really I need to probably apologize for not really catching that split on Bishop, which I should have, because I never intended that to happen. And I don't blame you, Mr. Garza, but I'm just, I mean, I probably should have been more on top of it. And when I kept seeing the maps, I didn't, I thought, I thought it was all in, in, from, from Driscoll on down. So, but I apologize to Mr. Garza. I'm glad he, he brought it up, but we never support splitting up Bishop and I don't think it's right for the people. It's a small community, you know, they have to have a voice and I think by putting them together in, in one voice, it's other, my district or somebody else's district, you know, let it be, because I think that's the only way they're going to have a voice in Bishop. And I, you know, again, I, I, I'll probably vote, my, my deal is BB because I hear everybody else saying that, but, but it'll be BB with the fact that we put Bishop, either one or the other, but all together, no split, you know, and then, you know, I, I, again, I didn't mean that to happen, I didn't, sorry, I didn't see it coming, but, but anyway, other than that, I just want to thank all the people that have been here more than once and, you know, we hear you, 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 you know, we, you know, we, we know how you feel and democracy and I just want to say one thing that, and I'm, I'm probably, I want to apologize about the time because we just took the time, we couldn't help the time, but I tell you, we could have just gone out and hired somebody real quick and we didn't. We went through the process and the process put us a little far back, but at least we did the right process. We, you know, we went for, and this is how we got, and this is how we got Mr. Garza. You know, he, he was chosen from the other, the other people that applied for this consideration and the, his, Rio's company did an excellent job, you know, and they continued to excellent job, very responsive, always responsive to us that I know of, saying, hey, where are we at? What do you need, or you want to change this? So I just wanted to say, thank you to Mr. Garza for, for, for being there and, and I know when, especially when Commissioner Chesney says, I want another map, you know, and Mr. Garza was, you know, was there to do another map and, you know, and that goes to show that he's willing to work with everybody. So.
Yes, sir.
But again, thank you very much for being here. Thank you very much for your participation. Thank you very much for your input. God bless you.
Commissioner Chesney.
Are you going to go last, Judge? I'm happy to defer if you want to talk. Are you going to go last?
I feel like I, I, I mean, go ahead.
I didn't know if y'all were going to, if you, if you were looking for everybody to choose their map, I didn't hear what, if Mar, if Mar.
Right, no, these were just general comments for right now.
Okay, okay. I guess general comments, obviously the Bishop thing is, is something we all, I think that there's a clear consensus there, that was some, that was just an oversight and, and not intentional by any means, that's definite. And, you know, and as I was looking actually at that, as I said earlier, to me, you know, Driscoll is, I think, kind of a, it's not a community, it's kind of a community and interest with Bishop, you know, they work a lot together. So I would think maybe a general comment would be that we should look at maybe putting Driscoll and Bishop together wherever the court decides to do, because I think that would be a real positive community of interest. So that's a general thing. Again, you know, I think Mr. Garza has, and I'll be first to tell you, I was skeptical coming into this and the one thing that I will say about this court, we have our fights and they are like epic, but.
Popcorn worthy.
They are, you know, it's, it's like watching a good novella every once in a while, is what I've been told, but, but our fights are not partisan, right? That, that is not what they are. They are issue dominated. And certainly as the only Republican on this court, I can be the one who says that the easiest because I am definitely outnumbered, but I have never felt that way. And, and I think that says a lot about this court and a lot of the quality of this court doing just kind of what is right for the community or trying to do so. And to compliment Mr. Garza, he has followed the court's lead and the public lead in a, in a very fast, fashion. And if you hadn't talked to him, you ought to hear what they did in San Antonio today. That was a little crazy up there, so I feel like we're not going to, you know, go that direction because I, I think there are arguments for all of these maps, right? I really do, because they all reflect what we've articulated, which is try to keep them similarly in demographics, make sure we have minority representation. All three of, three of the four districts are minority dominated districts. I don't think anybody's going to argue with that. To try to stay as similar as we can from a partisan standpoint, Mr. Ray said it, other people have said it, we've become a purple county in my opinion. And I think these districts mirror, depending on what we end up with, the ones that are drawn so far, districts, sorry, maps seem to mirror that. I think that's a, a very positive thing. The deviation, anything under 10 is legal. I didn't, I, I, I didn't intend for him to create that. I didn't, I, I, I didn't intend for him to create that CC. I had just asked for some, some, um, different statistics. But I guess when you do that, it gets, it creates another map. So I didn't mean to put him to any extra work. But I didn't, as I said the other night, I didn't like the deviation on that one and asked him to go back and tweak that. And therefore that's why you have the modified CC today, um, based on that, which it knocks it down some more. Kind of a general comment and I read, you know, I, I really enjoyed my dialogue with everybody and certainly with Mr. Dowling. And one of the points he made in his, um, paper that he sent to us was, well, you know, you really don't want to make precinct four the biggest because it's going to grow the fastest and there's already this big deviation. There's another argument to that. And the other argument is, as Mr. Garza started this conversation, when we all had this, he said, you have to, you have to consider the undercount in all of this. You can't just consider it for the part that we want. You got to consider for all of it. And if in fact, there's a significant undercount in the minority precincts, which there are three, then that would mean that the deviation, even though legally it is and we have to deal with it. But it, what it really means is I don't think the, the precincts are as different in size as show today. So just because if the court keeps precinct four a little larger, because it's a lot larger now, I don't think that's a problem. One, because it's under the 10% and it could be, we could get it down to somewhere around the 5% range possibly. And two, because I, I, I think if we're going to count the undercounts for the arguments that we made on the front end, we got to do it on the back end. And in reality, I don't think the deviation is anywhere near what it is. If the undercount is what has been represented, because I doubt there was, that, no one said there was any real undercount in precinct four. So mine's pretty accurate. And if there's a significant precinct undercount in the other three, then that would tighten your deviation. So that would, that's just a kind of a general point on that. My tendency, and I'm not stuck on it, I'm really not. My tendency was, you know, A, because I thought it was just the easiest to start from because it, it did the least change. But I'm not, you know what, I'm not stuck on it. I'll listen to other people, um, you know, whatever. I, I still think you could tweak A just a little bit. Because right now I think the way the numbers are on A, I go from the largest precinct to the third largest precinct. And they're all pretty tight. So you could, let's say, give a portion of 124, if not all, but a portion of it back to precinct four, which would help Commissioner Modas because precinct 124 is very R, you know, leaning, not leaning, very, very R precinct. And so it wouldn't hurt him to do that. So I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to take, you know, whatever back. But 124 is the only one of those three that worked because the others aren't contiguous without 124. So that was it. But again, I'm, I'm open to, you know, suggestions. And I really think the Driscoll Bishop thing we ought to look at, I know that's not in my precinct, but I just looked at them thinking, golly, how those two aren't together, was kind of beside me. Because right Aguado C and Banketti, you know, we've got them in the same precinct, right? And, and this one's, this, this one has it shifting from Commissioner, uh, Modas to Commissioner Hernandez. And we're keeping them together. So I don't know. I think whoever we decide, I, I really think that would be a good one. So that, that's, that's, I guess, my general comments. But again, I'm open to suggestion. I just, and, and I'm, I'm not ashamed to say it. I don't think it gets me in any kind of trouble to say I want to keep as much of my precinct as I can, as long as it's legal. So I'm going to say it that way. Because, you know, Tim made some comments about that too. And I'm not keeping my precinct because it's, uh, it's illegal. I'm not trying to keep it because it's demographically unbalanced. I'm trying to keep it because I also think there's a big part of people wanting to have, um, comfort. So every time you change their comfort and you change their precincts and you change who represents them, that's sometimes good, sometimes not so good. So anyway, so I, I, you know, I'm going to go ahead and stick to my story on that. I, I would prefer to give up as little as I can, um, as long as it's legal, as long as it meets the deviation, as long as it's demographically based and as long as it's partisan the same way. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go back to Mr. Garza because he made a few tweaks while we were all talking. And you were going to tell us a little bit about Bishop. Will you go back to that map? And then it might help for clarity, uh, to go over once more BB versus BB modified.
Okay.
But I, I concur that, that you have heard the will of the court regarding Bishop.
Right. So let me begin with, um, what happens when we move Bishop, uh, the Bishop precincts together. As I mentioned, there are two precincts that divide Bishop. And in the BB plan, those two precincts were put in different districts. So then if the court wants to go with Plan BB, but wants to modify it so that Bishop is unified, there are two options. Either you move those two precincts, 36 and 102, so that they're both together in precinct one, or move them so that they're both together in precinct two.
Yeah, give Connie just a chance to, to bring that up and.
Which precincts?
Southwest corner.
There you go.
There you go.
This one and that one?
Yes.
Let me share my screen real quick so those in Zoom can see it.
For those of you on Zoom, we're sharing screens so you can see what we're talking about, which is precinct 102 and 36.
Right. And so I've run the numbers on, uh, those two precincts. So, um, uh, precinct, um, 102 is more densely populated. It's 2,200 people. And precinct 36 is a little bit less populated. It's 1,200 people. So if you, uh, if you combine them both in precinct one, I know that the Common Cause Group and other folks have been very concerned about the, the total, the top to bottom deviation. That would in fact increase the deviation in Plan BB from where it stands under the plan that was submitted. And it would raise it to 5.09. But if you go the other direction and move both of those precincts so that they're both contained in precinct two, then the deviation stays about the same. It's at 2.7% if you unify them in precinct two, which is very close to the deviation that's presented in BB.
And, and I think you had said that we could possibly have a lot of this kind of in, in a lifetime wasn't the word we said. But because obviously there might be some other tweaks, like when you weren't here, you know, I kind of, the Driscoll thing got brought up. So I, I would wonder, assuming it stays with Commissioner Gonzalez for the sake of this, if you ended up putting Driscoll in there too, you know, what would that do? And I know there could be a zillion questions come up, but I, I don't know how else to do it except to ask.
Right, right. So the, the concept on, on the BB plans, both the modified and the current one, was Commissioner Hernandez needed population. And so in order to maintain, so when we begin this process, we, we talk about the two major legal obligations of the county. You have to get, uh, one person, one vote, and that's what we were talking about here with the deviation. But you also have to protect minority voting interest. And you have to keep the districts in their, uh, current concentrations as best you can. I mean, they can go up a little bit or down a little bit, but three districts in Nueses County are considered minority opportunity districts. And so the population to the west, um, into these rural areas maintains the Commissioner precinct one concentrations on those levels. And that's why we took that, uh, took that route with Plan BB and BB modified. Both of them take Commissioner precinct one west into those rural areas. The other thing that sort of, uh, uh, conjoined with that philosophy was trying to, um, uh, correct a neighborhood, um, uh, in the voting precincts around Mr. Commissioner Modas's home precinct. And so we did those things and those were precincts that we took out of Commissioner precinct one in order to accomplish that. And so that's, that's sort of the, the mindset about how the BB plan and the AA plan, uh, sort of got formed. And so I think if you start moving too many of those precincts in the west end, out of the west end and back into Commissioner precinct one, you start jeopardizing the minority numbers in precinct one. And so that's, that's why we tried to, in Plan BB actually tried to expand it further into the west to try to unify those, those rural communities together in one precinct. But obviously, uh, you know, we, we, uh, we messed up with that precinct one, 102, um, having.
But we can combine Bishop.
Yes.
And, um.
And Driscoll's in that one, right? I think.
No.
No, no. Driscoll would not be, Driscoll would be in one.
I'm sorry. No, that's what I meant. Under BB, Driscoll would be combined with Bishop in one.
No.
Oh, you're saying take it.
Just the two precincts. So we.
Because you want to keep Bishop.
Well, we're saying.
That way.
Yeah, so originally Driscoll went to Hernandez in BB, okay?
And AA, okay. BB, you're talking BB, my bad.
But in the, I think the best we can do in keeping Bishop as a community of interest and still keep that deviation in a nice, slow, you know, number, which is 2.7%. You can, you can combine Bishop, but not include Driscoll. And since I was in Driscoll today at City Hall for several hours, I can tell you that Driscoll is as close to your precinct as it probably is to Bishop. It's only seven miles from Petronilla. It's probably another 10 miles to, and what I'm saying is, as long as we're sort of espousing theories and philosophies, um, I'll tell you something I thought today is that I wish everybody could have a little bit of rural in them. Because I'm going to tell you something, it scares me a little bit when you only have one commissioner that is going to represent the rural community. Because that rural community will never get the voice that it deserves. And it's the one that has the most vulnerability through our social determinants of health.
But this doesn't do that right Judge.
No, this one helps. That's why I like it.
Yeah, Bishop stays, Bishop is a whole.
Bishop stays intact. But, but, but originally it didn't. But now he says we could still do it.
That's right.
The one thing we couldn't satisfy, and I would normally, you know, say, hey, great idea, put Driscoll and Bishop together. But in this case, because of the shifting population and Hernandez needing population, we need Driscoll in one in order to.
Right.
Satisfy.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
And, and, and again, what I like about this, and again, I'm super focused in this area right now and just today. You have three commissioners under this plan that would, should always care about representing the rural. Why? Because under this plan, the one we're talking about right now tweaking, Modas would have Robstown, Hernandez would have Driscoll, and Jag would have Bishop.
And Judge, I've got unincorporated area.
And you would have unincorporated.
I've got a.
Yeah, you would have that. In other words, this, this would actually have. Right.
I, I thought about moving London, but then drawing the ire of Chesney.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Right, right.
Come on, man. This is tough. Y'all are making this tough enough.
Yeah. No, but I'm just saying now we all have balance, right? Now there's a real sense of balance. And it's, what it, what's impressive is that the tweak didn't change the deviation. And you want, look, let's face it, you want that number as low as it can go. That's the, that's the, that's the hopeful idea. Because, and the undercount is an interesting concept and it should be applied equitable. But let's face it, we all know where the undercount is and where it's not. And it's, it's going to be such that you don't want to mess around with the area that we know we have documented real estate and development growth. All you have to do is take, as I say, the landfill way home and you know it's number four that's growing.
Right.
And it's growing in a way that we can't even imagine. So I think four is going to be unconstitutional before the 10 years is out. And that's just the way these things, that's why you've got to go as low as you can go. Because you've got to have a cushion. And that's, that's what we see. That's the trend anyway.
And we just have to count better next time too, because that's going to help the deviation.
And you know COVID really hurt us.
Right. I'm just saying, I mean, I think if, if there was a significant undercount, that should help also.
So we've relived Bishop, but it's a whole, looking at 2.7 deviation. If we put it with, uh, precinct one, it's a five point deviation. So.
Right.
How much does AA and BB change? Because AA does meet that full Bishop, uh, need. And BB also, my copy is cut off, so I can't get a, a better view than maybe what you have on BB now.
BB or BB modified?
Well, see, we should have had.
I've got BB modified.
Different numbers all around. That's, that's the, the confusing part. I'm looking at whatever we had shared online for today's agenda. So I don't know if that's BB or BB modified.
BB modified.
Is it BB modified?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I'm looking at the right one then. And it's the one that you all have up there. So I'm, you know, a lot of AA and BB looks similar, but I know that there's some precincts that really kind of crunch down the numbers better.
The difference between AA and BB is the neighborhood around your voting precincts. So those, those precincts are not joined in AA. BB joins those precincts.
You get your communities of interest in BB.
Yeah, yeah.
And the modified is just the tweak between, um.
The college.
The college, right.
The university.
Right. Just to kind of keep everybody, because it does get confusing, right?
I'm very confused Judge.
Well, modified means today, right? That's what happened is that everything that doesn't say the word modified is what you've already seen. Today you're seeing modified, but we can identify it verbally. So you don't have to guess. And so the difference between BB and BB modified is that precinct 91, okay? So that's your college, right? That's, that's the.
University.
The universe, thank you, the university.
Students.
And the last thing I'd, I'd, uh, raise with the, um, with the court, and I know that from speaking to all five of you, that this has not been a big concern. But it's, it's discussed over and over again. The, uh, political, uh, fallout from this is negligible. So in the benchmark, um, these, these districts were about, um, precinct one was in the mid 40s in terms of democratic voting strength. In any of the plans that we've submitted, it stays in the mid 40s. Precincts two and three were in the mid 50s in terms of democratic score. And in all the plans, including double B and double B modified, they stay in the mid range of the 50s. And precinct four remains at, uh, in terms of democratic numbers in the mid 30s. So all of the plans compared to the current plan benchmark, don't move the, uh, political needle in any of the precincts, which is what I was told the court wanted. And that's what we did.
You know, I, I shared earlier and, and I said it, I don't remember if it was Monday or last week's Commissioner Court meeting, but, you know, in, in advocating for communities' interests, that's what it is, right? And I know you mentioned, just so people know, you know, the viable neighborhood is literally like cut in two. So one side is one commission precinct and then the other side that I live in is mine. And it's not about that. It can stay that way, right? But I want to, I want people to know that are kind of confused why, why that's alluded to. My biggest concern with, uh, with BB is that the true community of interest, which is city of Robstown loses out the county part of Robstown, right? And Robstown's very unique, right? There's the city of Robstown, city proper, and everything on the other side of Western Avenue, basically, if you're familiar with Robstown, is considered the county side. So long ago, decades ago, the county had that responsibility and we still do to this day. Uh, I think it should be included eventually into the city proper. But until we get to that point, it's still considered, uh, separate. That precinct 105 is actually in BB. So if we did go with BB, that would be one of my, my recommendations that we add or modify that. I don't know how much votes that is and if that means that I need to trade off somewhere along the edge, maybe the eastern edge, Commissioner Chesney, like 124, something like that. But then it takes away from Commissioner Hernandez. So that would be my concern is that we just don't chip away at that whole city of the community of Robstown. But, um, uh, I, I mean, I don't want to lose any area that I represent, but I understand that that's going to happen. That we're all missing areas that we've gotten comfortable with in the last two, four, six, eight years or more that we've all been here. So I don't. So I don't have heartburn on some areas, especially if my neighborhood stays the way it is. Well, they're, you know, I'm really looking at the county services where they're really used and utilized. It's outside the City of Corpus Christi, right? We do represent Corpus Christi, but when we're talking services and resources, it's typically going to be outside. And so that's when looking at this, that that one's just really hard for me, and that would be a motion I would make. So I don't know if you have those numbers, if you can help with those.
If we take a break, I can go look to see what moving 105 would do.
If we can look at that, and then maybe, I don't know how that impacts, like say, Precinct Four, Precinct One. It doesn't impact Precinct Two at all. So if we can look, how does that impact Commissioner Hernandez with the numbers you were mentioning? And then, on the other end, I know Commissioner Chesney talking about losing a lot, right? And that's a very important precinct for me that I would be losing because that community interest. And I feel that if that could be traded off, where I take on One and give One off on the eastern side of the boundaries, which is 124, at least if we could do that, then that would make it a lot easier for me.
Still give Bishop together?
Yeah, 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 no, no, no.
Bishop doesn't, that's already done.
No, we got to keep Bishop together.
Yeah, that's, that's not impacting. Why don't we take a 10-minute break?
Just a quick, too. The comment on 91 also concerns me a bit, too, because of this road, as Tim said. Because really and truly, what you're doing is you're boxing me in. So, you know, my precinct is it, and then I got, I got, I got nothing around me. I got the one over here on the water, 19, I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you, I'm saying this. So, I mean, and I don't, I, so I'm a little unclear, I'm a little uncertain on this.
That's just modified, Commissioner. If you go just to BB, that doesn't, that doesn't happen.
That's right.
Okay?
Sorry.
That's all right.
So, and by the way, I'm right there, you represent me.
Okay, so you're just on BB? Okay, my bad.
You have to remember that, actually.
Because at the end, at the end of all this, before we vote, you're going to, we're going to take a break and go put something together to show everybody in the room. Because this is really getting, not on your fault, but it's really getting confusing to me. So it probably is to others as well, and I'd sure like to see the final thing before I.
Sure, why don't we take a little break? So, look, the idea is, the consensus of the court, and actually the public, is you've heard on Bishop. So that's already a little bit of help to you, Mr. Garza.
Right.
And then now you've heard this one tweak, and we need to see its ramifications.
Right.
And that's 105.
Right.
Why don't the court take, you know, let's.
Excuse me, Judge, I just want to ask.
10 minutes.
Am I going to take, am I going to take Driscoll?
Well, if we vote on it, that's, that's under BB, that would be correct, yes.
I guess it all depends on the outcome he brings back.
Say that again.
The outcome he brings back. It's going to depend on what he brings back.
Oh, yeah.
No, but, but he needs Driscoll, that's, the outcome wouldn't change on Driscoll, because he needs population. So Driscoll's fine.
So then let me go to BB. So BB is a, is very significant change for mine, right? It's taking four, three and a half precincts, and giving me one and a half new ones, when I'm happy to represent anybody, but you're, that's a significant change. Again, I don't mean to be addressing you, that's a significant change compared to, and it doesn't have to be A, but there's got to be, I mean, that's a significant change for my precinct when it doesn't have to be that significant, as far as changing precincts, and still getting within the deviation. So I, the BB, that's what makes me uncomfortable about BB is I'm giving up a lot, and I'm having to take stuff that I've never represented before, when I don't, when, when this process could be done, that I don't have to do that.
Hey, you and me both, I'm losing Aguado Se, I'm losing Banquete, I'm losing Driscoll.
Right.
I mean, those are big areas as well. I mean, I wish we could keep the maps, because we've made so much inroads and progress in early areas we represent. But, I mean, I hear that, and I agree, and I don't know how much that means to mix all this up. That's why I said, these maps, there's a little bit of something I love about all of them, but there's a whole lot that I didn't like either. And so, I mean, if we're going to take that approach, which I don't mind, you know, spending some time looking at that, then, I mean, that's just, I mean, I knew coming in that there was going to be some give, right? That I had to give away. And I'm taking, when you talk about what's being given or what's being taken, Commissioner Chesney, I mean, three, 119, 32, and 124, those are just the ones I can pick out. And I know it's a few others, like 92, I think, that I'm taking on, that those are new areas that I've never represented either. So I don't mind doing that, but if we can find some area where we share a common border, and if there's, there's areas that we can work through, then I wouldn't mind working through those and making that happen.
But let me, let me just make one quick comment before, is please remember, everybody, that the reason change has to occur is because it's unconstitutional. And it's not unconstitutional by one time, it's not unconstitutional by two times, it's 3.5 times. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that the uncomfortableness that you feel is because change must happen, in order for there to be fairness.
Absolutely not the right thing, Judge. The uncomfortableness is, every single one of these meets the legal standard, period. The one that is the least impacting, which also meets the legal standard, I, it's completely because it's so much change. The change is coming, I get it, but it doesn't have to be, based on the seven options that we have, BB is one of the ones that changes mine the most with no.
But that's because your population is so over.
I get it, but so, but if you go back to A, it doesn't, it takes, it's completely different.
Right.
I'm not taking on anything new, I'm just giving up ones that I know I've got to give up. That's a big difference.
So my response to that discussion from Commissioner Modis and Commissioner Chesney is, the reason there is more dramatic change in BB, and why not just the two of you, but all four commissioners have substantial change in their boundaries, is because we want to get as close to zero as we can. And we also want to try to avoid splitting voting precincts, because we are on the eve of the beginning of the March primary. And the more, so if you give me unlimited time, and you don't care about splitting voting precincts, I can go in and carve up this plan so you get zero deviation, and you have the appearance of having little change. But it's going to wreak havoc on the election system. I mean, we all, all of us talked about how we want to try to avoid the confusion for the voters. Well, if you keep voting precincts intact, that's one way to avoid confusion among the voters. They know that the voting precinct they've been voting in for the last 10 years, they still go there and vote. Now, it may not be Commissioner Hernandez that they see on the ballot.
Well, today in Nueces, we vote anywhere.
Right, but.
But still, I will say to you that historically, most of our voting centers are, you know, the big ones are where people normally vote. So I agree with you in that there's that, that history, but we're lucky that we can vote anywhere.
And let me share with you, I mean, I don't want to get this complicated, but let me share with you. So when I took over Precinct Three, when I was sworn in in 2017, and I went out to the communities in the western part, which I'm losing, Aguado Se and Banquete, they said, you know, you're like our already third commissioner in less than 10 years, third. So I get what you're saying as far as wanting to go where they normally go and vote, but I think representation and representative makes a big difference, too. And that may be a separate argument here, but, but I'll tell you, they went from Commissioner Gonzalez, when he used to represent that area, right before the last census, and I think before, and then Commissioner Ortiz, and then, of course, I replaced him. So that wasn't really much of a change. But I think when you have a significant change in representatives, it does make a difference, because we get to know them, and we get to help try to work in those communities. I'm not saying to get rid of it, I'm just saying, look, I don't want people out there to think that I'm throwing them out with the bathwater. I love those communities, I've devoted a lot of budget and our county tax dollars to those, to those areas, and a lot of time and effort out there. So this is a, this is a time for me to really mourn, because I've built up so many, you know, partnerships out there. And there's a lot of good things out there that if they change as proposed, I'm still going to want to be involved with and help Commissioner Hernandez with, because I think there's so much worthwhile. I just, I want the people to understand that. I mean, and I get what Commissioner Chesney's saying, it's.
Absolutely.
It's, we've, we've put so much time into working the communities that it's like, gosh, now we got to try to build them up again. So I'm not against that, and I'm not against wanting to keep as is, because I agree with what you're saying about the numbers. But I want the community to understand, too, that it's not just that we're giving it up because we want to. And especially, if that's something that we're going to look at in one area, then, then, you know, then do we open it up? And we'll be here hours, or we come back on Friday to resolve this, right? So I don't know how much we have, but I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not putting a time on it tonight. But, but that is, you know, a concern for me as well.
And I'm here at your, at your command.
Mr. Garza, will you also remind everybody, I asked you a question about, explain, I mean, he will still represent Aguado Se and Banquete until such time as his election takes place.
So, I'm not, so that's a good point. When, when do you lose your constituencies, right? And I think that in November, there will be a, elections, final elections for Nueces County, and there may be a new commissioner that represents those areas, depending on what you adopt today.
November 22.
Right.
Well, no, because.
No, it'll be the election, the date of the election.
The day that we vote on these, we change. Like today, like from today to tomorrow, don't they change?
No.
So, the, oh, yes, so.
Because you got a file, you got a file for election 2022, starting Saturday, for a boundary that could be what we decide tonight.
That's right.
So it does change from today to tomorrow.
That's right.
We go over there, we're not welcome to go out of town, I mean, it's not going to be that. But, I mean, that's, that's what's happening here.
No, that's absolutely correct.
That, that's correct.
It's a good point, I forgot about that one.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, John.
And if I said that before, Judge, I misspoke, this, it happens today.
I can't even find one of these. So we need time to recess.
Yeah, I was just going to go ahead and offer the recess that I spoke about just a few moments ago. Let us take at least 15 minutes, Mr. Garza.
Yes, and I will look at Precinct 105 and see what the different options are for that.
Right, and for our clerk, 7:13, we're on recess. If you take the mics off completely, for those of you online, for those of you online, you won't hear anything, you'll just see a blank screen that says the meeting is in recess. We'll be back shortly, thank you. Okay, great, so I'm going to gavel us back in, and for our record-keeping, it's 7:40 PM this evening, and we have taken our break, and we're back on the record. And one of the things that I do want to do, just because it's an important part of the ministerial process, is that we've been in public hearing, and we're going to continue with Mr. Garza, and you'll give us an update. And then I'm going to close the public hearing officially, then we're going to reopen into our regular agenda meeting, okay? And then we'll address the agenda item. It doesn't really mean any difference for you and I, but it is an important part of the housekeeping, so, Mr. Garza.
Okay. So when we, when we broke, Commissioner Modis asked for us to examine what would happen in terms of all of the things that we're trying to accomplish here if we moved Precinct 105 back into Precinct Three. And I've, I've looked at the numbers, and of course, because we've been talking about other changes on the western end of the county between Commissioner Precinct One and, and Two, what I did is I looked at, at two options, right? If we put all of Bishop in Commissioner Precinct One, what does that do when we remove Precinct 105? If we leave, leave all of Bishop in Commissioner Precinct Two, what, what does that do to the deviation if we shift 105 into Three? And so what the numbers show is that if we move 105, which by the way is 2,081 people, out of Commissioner Precinct One as it is in Plan BB, and move it back to Commissioner Precinct Three, the population of Precinct One drops from 87,912 to 85,831, with Bishop in Two. And the population of Three jumps to 91,057, and the top-to-bottom deviation jumps to 5.9. Commissioner Precinct Three now becomes the largest precinct in the plan. If we leave, or if we put all of Bishop in Precinct One, then the deviation, the change is, is a little bit smaller. The population of Precinct One drops to 87,831. And that's because, it was, we begin at 89,000 because we put all of Bishop in One. And, but Precinct Three, of course, goes to 91,057, and still is the largest one. And the top-to-bottom deviation doing that scenario is 4.6. So both of those options produce higher deviations than with the Plan BB, the way it was when we started, and even Plan BB with the precinct change for joining Bishop.
Turns out you know what you're doing. It really, it seems so easy, right? Just one little change, and it really just, it really takes that deviation up. How about, given that information, let me ask the audience, if you need more time, take your time, but if there is anybody that would like to, to make some comment, let me, let me offer that opportunity right now. How about commissioners?
Judge, are you asking for a comment?
Yes, sir.
I was just, I would like to say that I thought the whole process was supposed to help me kind of bring up my population, you know? I think I'm underpopulated.
Go ahead and use your mic.
I think I'm underpopulated, and I would just like to keep it as is, BB.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
And just so we're clear, the BB, where you are, this original BB, right?
Correct.
Not the modified.
So there, there should be a table that gives you the BB modified. What we're talking about here is Plan BB.
Not the modified.
Not the modified.
And.
With the exception of Bishop.
Except with the.
Bishop.
It is going to be modified, but not that modified, it's going to be modified because of.
Just call it BB Bishop. BBB, triple B, Bishop.
And so if you do what you've said you're doing, not what, if what the court asks you to do, I'm sorry, then none of the percentages would change, minority, Republican, Democrat, in any of the four precincts.
So I'm not sure about the minority numbers if we, if we make the 105 change. So here's, here's the deal.
Well, it shouldn't, because it, well, no, it could increase it.
It would increase Modis, and it would decrease Hernandez, because the precinct we would be pulling out of Commissioner Precinct One is 70% Hispanic, and it's 2,000 people. So it is like, it's likely to drop it a little bit.
A tenth or so, I mean, probably not, yeah, maybe a.
It'll drop it a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know, okay, fine, but you would go, in other words, whatever, and the court seems like it's getting close to a direction, if the court says, okay, this is what we want you to go draw up, right? In other words, I wouldn't want to vote on anything, I would hope nobody would, until we saw the, like, like this again. I mean, can we do this tonight?
So the political data is, is difficult for us to manufacture, because we work out of two workstations. One is our mapping workstation, and the other one, we have access to political data. And they're at far ends of the city. So we could get the political data to you in the morning. I mean, I, so none of the plans that we've worked on, Commissioner, have any substantial impact on the partisan nature of these, of these districts. So they're all in those ranges, all six plans, including the, but. So what, you're under a deadline for finishing up this work, to get it done before the beginning of the primary filing period. That's what the Secretary of State's told us, that's what the dead, no deadlines have been moved. So what, that's why I have urged the court to find the date at which it will adopt a plan. And, and so you can adopt a plan today, one of these plans. If you have time to do a Commissioners Court meeting tomorrow, you could do that, or Friday, you could do that. But I think those dates were checked.
We don't have enough time to post.
Right, no, and I agree, you could recess, but it would have to be tomorrow. But, but you could, the court could pass a plan, subject to.
Yes.
The final numbers.
Absolutely.
Matching up to.
What I've indicated. What I've indicated.
Right.
Right.
And if they don't, we could, uh, recess the meeting till tomorrow as a, just as a, you know.
Well, we are, the courthouse is closed tomorrow, I, we would have to roundtable on that for staff purposes, to be able to have support staff. We are posted for Friday. We are posted for Friday, okay, great, well then, there we are.
I won't be here Friday, I'm out.
Well, and I think it's really, whatever the will of the court is, I think, as long as those numbers match up, I don't think we're gonna have to come back.
Well, I think Mr. Garza's saying he feels good about that.
Opportunity to come back.
Right, so, so.
But I, but, but, but you've been pretty dead-on on your numbers, so.
He has.
If you're telling us that, that I, I have a great deal of faith in that, and, and I mean that in, with the highest level of compliment, but at the same time, this is a big deal, and I wanna make sure, like we all do, I think, that, that the numbers match up. So, so if we're posted for Friday, and, I don't know what else to do for, can Mr. Gonzalez, I guess, can you zoom? Could you, if we had to, I mean, we probably wouldn't have to, I don't think he's gonna be off, I'm just saying.
Right.
As a precaution.
Let's keep, as they say, let me just actually close the public hearing right now, and I'm gonna move right into public comment, okay? So you can stay right where you are, Mr. Dowling, I just wanna know, a note for the record that we're gonna, we've heard all of the information, uh, that Mr. Garza has, and of course, we took our recess for the record, and he came back and gave us those answers. We're still gonna have the same dialogue, but we're gonna close the public hearing, and now I'm reconvening the regular meeting, and the time is seven forty-nine PM. So I, I would like now to have public comment on our regular meeting, which really goes to the heart of why we're here, which is the agenda item, which is considering adopting the order establishing the new Commissioner precinct boundaries for the purposes of redistricting related to the twenty-twenty-one US census, the twenty-twenty US census. So having said that, um, Mr. Dowling.
Your Honor, uh, this has been, um, very fun process, it's been, uh, interesting and great to see democracy in action. This is real-time stuff, wonderful, what you all are doing. Uh, what I would recommend the court, based on what I think my understanding is, is the following. If I understand correctly, um, we're gonna, what we're looking at, what I would recommend is do BB with the Bishop modification, which I understand means you'd put precincts thirty-six and one-oh-two, uh, fix that problem the way we discussed before the break, and if I heard correctly, that moves the deviation just minuscule amount from two-point-six-one in BB to two-point-seven in BB Bishop, triple B, as you said a minute ago, Your Honor. Uh, and then I think Commissioner Hernandez's comment was right on target. He says, I don't wanna be giving up people, I'm losing people, I'm underpopulated already. So I would say leave one-oh-five the way, where it is. I'm very pleased to hear from, uh, Mr. Garza that there's no partisan or voting rights issues implicated by anything we're talking about right now. So I would urge the court to vote on BB with the Bishop modification, leave one-oh-five where it is, and one, and, uh, map BB, and vote tonight, and if you wanna get confirmation that, you know, Mr. Garza has had to do this under great stress and difficulty, and just confirm that the numbers, if that's what the court's pleasure is. If I was in your spot, I've developed enough confidence in him, I'd say, Jose, I trust you, I think you're a, you're a great person having this job, and I'm ready to vote now, that was just what I'd do. But, uh, I would urge you to vote for the BB with the Bishop modification, but leave one-oh-five in BB.
Okay, thank you.
Question too, and I forgot, can I ask it now?
Of course.
I didn't know if I was.
Yeah, go ahead.
I forgot, so, Mr. Garza, can you also, um, in BB, can you tell me why? I, I, I'm getting partial one-twenty and losing partial one-twenty-five, and not just keeping all of one-twenty-five and not taking one-twenty?
He's gonna grab the mic, hold on.
It was about population, and getting the population down. So we, we went in and carved up that precinct, uh, to, to do that. And we tried it with the whole precinct, and it jumped the numbers up too high. And we tried it with, with, without doing any of the precinct, and it jumped the numbers up too high.
So why though, wouldn't you just leave one-twenty alone and give me more partial one-twenty-five? I mean, I don't understand why I'm taking a partial of one-twenty, why don't I just take more of partial of one-twenty-five, which is mine? Not mine, I mean, my precinct, sorry.
Give him a second.
I mean, like, the equal amount, whatever you took from one-twenty, couldn't you just give back in one-twenty-five?
Sure. Okay. So we, so, we could do that. And I think the reason we did that is because where we cut off one-twenty-five, it, so one of the things that you wanna look at is compactness, right? And there was a street there that gave us the numbers that we wanted. And after we did that, is when we noticed that we needed, um, to, um, move more population in, or move more population out with, with, so we were carving, uh, precinct.
I get it.
Precinct thirty-two out.
So is it to keep streets together?
So to make it more compact, that's right, to have a line that runs along a street, and so that it's not jagged, et cetera. And, and thirty-two was all in the, in, in, uh, in precinct four, and we needed to remove more population.
No, no, I understand thirty-two and one, I, I get those two. So I guess my question is, um, what, what is the number in one-twenty that you had to take? And I would just ask for the court to at least consider just taking that one-twenty number and putting it back in one-twenty-five, so that I, then I'm only taking one new precinct, which is, I guess, okay.
I don't, I don't remember what that, what that number was, I'd have to go in and add up those blocks and see what.
So if, if, um, um, if I could make a.
That report here, and I don't see my staff or my co-counsel up on the.
Okay, so then, I would think, same thing, there would be a way to, uh, whatever the number is in one-twenty-five, just substitute it to where I don't have to take a partial precinct that, and just put it back in one-twenty-five, and not, and it shouldn't mess the, the balance, and you could tweak it to where it doesn't.
Right, so, um, that might be possible, and I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, if my, I know they were trying to get on, uh, if they get on and can put up the map, we can, we can check that. I don't have the hard numbers with me here.
Okay.
But what's the, I mean, playing devil's advocate, if we, if we did it, obviously, I just heard what the upside is, what's the negative? I mean, is it, is it not keeping the streets together?
So, so, you know, as, as, uh, uh, I was talking to Commissioner Matisse at the break, is that every change that you make.
Sure, it, it changes it everywhere.
So the division that we have in, in one-twenty-five is between Commissioner Precinct four and Commissioner Precinct two. But the break that we have in, um, in thirty-two is between four and three.
One-twenty, we didn't break thirty-two in this one, I, unless I'm looking at the wrong one, I thought the break was on one-twenty, not thirty-two.
Yeah, breaks down on thirty-two.
Yeah, thirty-two goes out.
Yeah, thirty-two goes out completely, I think the break is, but you're right, the break.
One-twenty-five is the one that's.
Right, so, I would at least like to look at that, and I, I, I mean, I would think there's gotta be a way to do that, because we're talking, there's gotta be a way to do that. It just doesn't make sense.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I was looking at modified.
That's okay, I, I did the same thing earlier.
While we look at these numbers, 'cause, I mean, in looking at them again, I, I do have some partner within, I wanna make sure we're on the right map, and also see if there was anyone for public comment, since this is a work in progress, and I think we need to hear from them as we're talking out loud as well. I don't know if it's, if, can we, is there anyone in the public that'd like to, uh, speak about this plan, or?
Renee, yes.
So one, one other thing that I would like to point out, though, as between one-twenty and one-twenty-five, the exchange would be between three different districts, and so there would be a ripple effect. So, one-twenty-five is between two and four, and one-twenty is between three and four, so.
So that was the reason.
That was the reason, so, you're right, you're right that the population in precinct four, we could control.
That wouldn't be, that's not actually, I don't think that's accurate, because I'm not saying, uh, I mean, yeah, it would, it would reduce it. Oh, you're saying because I have to go up there, but, and give some back to, to two different precincts, right?
That's right.
But I mean, it's a, it's gotta be a miniscule number, I mean, if it.
Actually, it's pretty dense population in that area.
Okay, well, I'd still like to look at it, I, I just, I don't, I don't understand the, I, respectfully, I think probably what could've happened here is, it didn't have to happen this way, if, if I would've just kept more of one-twenty-five because of that jagged street. If you'd have just said, all right, here's what we're doing, and so the ripple effect happened, because in this case, you made a decision how to, how to do the ripple, so in other words, if we'd have just started with, okay, we gotta get rid of some of one-twenty-five because it's too much, or whatever, based on this, and me taking a new one, then, uh, if we'd have done it the first way that way, then we might not have had to divide it, so at least I'd like to look at it, because I just never understand the, the, why we would split a precinct if it's not absolutely a hundred percent necessary, and this is not a hundred percent necessary to split a precinct. And we're splitting two precincts, when I don't think, I just don't think we have to, we have so many people.
Right.
And we've got such detailed software, there's no reason to be able to have to split any more precincts than we do. That's part of the thing you're not supposed to do, I thought, or if you can avoid it.
So, those are the two precincts that are split. If we make those modifications in one-twenty-five, it's going to impact precinct three, and we're gonna have to make a change somewhere else.
I mean, it's dense, the, the problem is, it's, it's, it's a dense precinct, so, I mean, theoretically, you would love all your precincts to be homogeneous, but they're not, and what I'm hearing is that one-two-five is dense, and therefore, it gets split, because again, the whole thing is bring that standard deviation down, so it's, something's gotta give here. The truth is, is that it's pretty, I mean, as.
It, it's absolutely not, it is absolutely not the easiest way to do this. I mean, we, again, going back to A, there is, that is such, the easier route to go, and I get.
And that's great, you've got.
No reason to split precincts, and it keeps the numbers down, it keeps the deviation down, it keeps my size down, and yet, now, again, I've gotta take on a new one, I gotta take on a partial new one, I gotta split one, that's not, to me, in the spirit of, we talked about, but.
Okay, hang on one second, we're gonna hear from a few people.
Okay.
We all, uh, we've got some folks here, uh, first, I'll, I'll recognize Renee Sines.
Okay, well, since you're talking about communities of interest, um, and I know that, um, Bishop was a concern, and now is Bishop going with, uh, Judge Gonzalez, or?
Commissioner, yes.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez, okay, so then, why are we not concerned with precinct one-oh-five, because that's Robstown? Why is it okay to split up that little piece, which is one-oh-five, that is, you're looking at over two thousand residents that are gonna be pulled out of Robstown and placed in a completely different precinct?
Well, I think the explanation that Mr. Garza gave could be repeated, but that was Mr., that was Commissioner Matisse's question, and his answer was that it's a, it's too big, it's, it's, it, it does not have the effect. Um, you, you cannot keep all of it together, Commis-, uh, precinct three winds up being the most populated already, or the second most populated, and it wasn't possible, it, it had a ripple effect. Every time we move the map, one precinct, it's gonna have a ripple effect, so, that's just par for it. But we did look at it, and Mr. Garza, would you repeat the, the answer?
But, but remember what we're at, too, so, so, right now, with the current maps that we have, I'm the least populated. So with this, these changes, I go to the second most.
Right.
Right, so, I don't mind, but, like you said, I mean, looking at standard deviation and all that other stuff, shouldn't there be a more uniform plan of growth? I mean, to go from fourth all the way to second, that's, that's a lot of change. And, and so, that, that, that's a big, that's a big concern, and, and I, and I agree, I think that, you know, we split up any community that, you know, we definitely wanna avoid that. Like I said, I mean, I think, going back to what I said, you know, in, in my neighborhood, I mean, I would rather keep fifty-nine with precinct one and, and maintain one-oh-five if the numbers were similar, uh, than, than lose that whole community of interest out there. Um, and, and for perspective also, right? Um, I know this is not part of the discussion, but my concern in coming in as Commissioner is that I had four out of the six community service buildings in the county, four out of the six were in precinct three. With the move, with, if we approve this map today, AA, that all shifts out of me and goes directly to Commissioner Matisse, all of it, all of it. Driscoll, Banquete, Aguado Se, and Robstown, all of them go to one precinct. That was not what I was advocating for in the beginning, I said, let's just try to spread, spread it out a little bit. So now, uh, my priorities are gonna be different, and they're gonna be all shifted to Commissioner Matisse, so, that, I mean, that's, that's a big change, right? That's a, that's a big deal, 'cause one-oh-five also includes the, the Robstown Community Center, uh, and the park out there. So, uh, we just, we need to be careful as we move forward, that, that should not have any, I'm sure, legal basis on how to determine our maps, but as I've been advocating, just our resources, right? What we're requiring for one particular commissioner to be responsible for and have the same amount of money, um, it's gonna be stretched out a lot more, uh, for precinct one. And all we're doing is just switching it out of my precinct to precinct one, that's all we did. So, you know, we talked about all those times, I'm talking about county roads as well, that's all being shifted out. So, that's just a whole nother problem, uh, with all of this. So, if we can switch one-oh-five for fifty-nine, I would not have a problem with that. I don't know if fifty-nine's numbers match one-oh-five.
They're pretty close.
Okay, if we can do that, then I, I think that, that, that solves a few problems.
So the, the population numbers are pretty close, I think there's fifty-nine's about two-hundred people more than, uh, one-oh-five, but the, uh, minority concentration is substantially different. One-oh-five is seventy percent Hispanic, and, uh, fifty-nine is fifty-five percent Hispanic. And Commissioner Hernandez has the lowest of the three Hispanic opportunity districts. It is the one that is the lowest in, in that percentage.
Well, I'm just trying, trying to throw options out there, 'cause, um.
And, and we could do that, and I, I'm not saying that that would be, that would make the plan unconstitutional, I'm just saying, every one of these tweaks has consequences, and if you're willing to live with those consequences for another goal, then, you know, you can, you can do it, uh, absolutely, you can do it. And that seems like, uh, in terms of population, uh, a, uh, swap that you could make. Uh, the impact that it might have in terms of the minority numbers, I think Commissioner Chesney is correct, it would have a small effect. So instead of being, you know, sixty-five percent Hispanic, he would be sixty-four percent. Instead of being sixty-nine percent, you would be seventy percent. And if you guys are willing to live with that sort of, of, uh, of differential, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Well, I'm willing to try and help the community by. I really would like to have the, the opportunity to work in Robstown. I have worked there most of my life, that's why I started working at the county, at the Calderon Building. But I really feel like I would be the underdog if it went, if it, if you took one-oh-five away from me.
So, are they split now?
I can't remember.
So, who's got a vote now, again, I'm sorry.
So fifty-nine is in one, and one-oh-five is in three, so we gave, under the, under the benchmark, under the current plan. So what Commissioner Matisse is suggesting is that in Plan BB, uh, and remember, we moved fifty-nine into three because it was in Commissioner Matisse's neighborhood, and we wanted to put that neighborhood back together. Commissioner Matisse is suggesting that maybe we, we swap those fifty-nine and one-oh-five in Plan BB.
So, let me just ask the question, and there's really, I mean, you would know better. So, in a city the size of Robstown, like, you know, we're talking Bishop, how big is Bishop versus Robstown? I can't remember the size.
Very different.
Thousand Bishops.
Pardon?
It's about three thousand.
So Bishop is.
About three thousand.
Robstown, I'm sorry, I know this, but Robstown's a lot bigger than Bishop?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bishop's got three thousand two hundred.
Maybe, you know, ask them, they might want to, Commissioners, that's not a bad deal on some occasions, but again, I'm a, whatever, I mean, I just, if you wanna look at that, John, and it works, and I would just ask the same thing on, but again, I'm, I'm fine, if you gave me all of one-twenty, I'd be happy with one-twenty, that's a great precinct for me, I just, the split thing just kinda, the split precinct.
I think your whole precinct is a great precinct for you.
No, no, I mean, the precinct number one-twenty is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, it's a great precinct to add to my precinct, it's kinda. No, I'm just saying, it's a great precinct to add to my precinct that's kind of confusing.
That's what I was going to say.
It is. No, no, it absolutely is. No, no, it is. I'm not complaining about the number at all or that that group of people. I just, the split precinct thing bothers me. So how does that work if you split it?
Let's talk
Does that become another precinct? It still just becomes a split precinct, some, one of, part of 120, okay?
Sure.
I guess we could change that, too, if we wanted to.
Think about big urban counties. I mean, this happens, guys, all the time, you know, I mean. In fact, it's a strange but good situation. I mean, what it means is you've got a great population there. And that it's dense enough that it can be, you know, split. I mean, in the perfect world, you'd have the perfect, you know, I mean, that's why, that's why time, we we've said it a million times, but you want to know why you need time for this.
Yeah.
Okay? And the truth is, is even though we posted on Friday, I mean, you're just going to come up with five other iterations that you think are going to work. What you need to do is choose the very, very best one right now and make some of these tweaks. By the way, you know, someone needs to go, you know, really thank all these wonderful people all over again because everything you've said has really helped, you know, make the process better. But one little piece is is moving a domino effect. The one thing Mr. Gataza has done effectively is shown you that the population, this is the one man, one vote, right? In the hierarchy of what is golden, the golden rule is one man, one vote. You start there. What's second? In my mind, it's, and and by the way, that one man, one vote gets you the deviation. Okay? And the second thing you want to look at is just minority population. Why? Well, because in the old days, we actually had preclearance where they actually cared to make sure that you were not being discriminated against. We do not have that anymore. So it's incumbent upon us to look at that. We've done that. We're about right, 70, 70, 70, and then 44, 43 point whatever. And then I think the last thing you want to do, but we did it anyway, is to make sure that as he's creating these maps, that there is minimal or de minimis change with regards to the political affiliation, right? Unfortunately, it's not illegal to look at a political affiliation, okay? I mean, there are some communities that shut the door and say, we are a dominant X party and we're going to make dominant X maps. And that's perfectly legal with our country.
Right.
May be insane, but it's legal.
Right.
We didn't do that here. We created a opportunity for redistricting where there was de minimis change on the political ramifications. But what we're feeling is the pangs of, mm, I've got change. Let me remind everybody, it's redistricting, okay? That's why you're not going to have it the same way that you wanted it. And I love that you're advocating for it. I run countywide, so, you know, but the pangs of this is an important precinct to me. I hear you and feel it. But there is no way to achieve those goal number one and goal number two and even the cherry on top with goal number three, de minimis political change, without change. You have to have change. No change equals no change.
Judge, I have the same problem in the West Osso.
Exactly.
You know, West Osso, for me, is divided.
Right.
Of course.
I mean, I have the high school and Commissioner Modis has the junior, the junior high. So I mean, I wish I could have all of them, but I don't have all of them. But, you know, so
But the 105, and just to, just to finish that up, and we'll hear from Ms. Rogers, just to finish up, oh, look, Rolando's on. So we'll recognize him in just a second. But but to recognize Commissioner Modis's concern, that one actually might be a swap that does not affect population. And it has a, very small, if the Commissioners are willing to accept it, 1% minority differential.
It's it's more critical to Mr. Hernandez.
It's more critical to Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to leave that on the table, right? Because that's what we're doing here, we're we're discussing.
Well, Judge, can we just, I mean, can we make, I mean, my motion would be if if Commissioner Modis is okay, is just to put 105 back in his precinct and see what that does.
I'm going to hold you, hold on just for one second while I hear from Ms. Rogers. I'll hold that, have you, I'll have you hold that thought.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries, Ms. Rogers.
No, thank y'all very much. Now I think we see why we were so adamant about having public input and why the timeline, what, you know, why we realized how difficult of a process this is. And y'all have done a great job, we're still sticking with that. But we're on a slippery slope here. And I have to agree with the judge and Commissioner Gonzalez. We've got to look at this holistically and what's best for the county and for the democracy, which is really, really hard. But that's exactly why I like being a League of Women Voters member. Because we organize ourselves on issues, we're nonpartisan, and we we try to look at the whole picture and what's best for everyone. So I would just like to remind you to do that with this redistricting process. And there was another reason we kept saying, you can change the map one time over the 10 years. And we have suggested that you pass maps. And if they're not sufficient or satisfactory, you do have a chance to revisit. And since you know that you're going to have a working group for an independent redistricting commission, those should all be good buffers for you to feel comfortable about getting a map tonight that is good for all of Nueces County and not just individual precincts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jose, do you want to introduce everybody to Rolando Rios? I don't know if, how many of our audience members know your law partner?
So Rolando is on the on the Zoom. He is my partner in these efforts together with Martin Galondo. Mr. Rios has a long history of of fighting for voting rights. He started out as general counsel to the Southwest Voter Registration Project. He's represented hundreds and of local jurisdictions and many, many counties in the redistricting effort.
Thank you, wel- welcome, Rolando. We just wanted to greet you and and say thank you for for all the efforts. I mean, for those of you that don't know, these guys have been burning the midnight oil in Bear County as well, so.
And that's Mr. Galondo, he's at the computer.
Hello there.
And Mr. Rios is right behind him.
I thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this. Marty is handling the computer right now. And so he will be directing the redistricting process pursuant to your direction, okay?
Thank you, thank you. As they say, Commissioners, any anything further? We're kind of pitching back to Commissioner Chesney and some comment, Commissioner Modis? I'm going to pitch back to Modis if you don't mind, Commissioner.
I I hear what everyone's saying, I understand the the numbers. But, you know, if we're talking about communities of interest and we don't see how important it is to keep 105 with the rest of of Robstown, then I'm going to vote against this map, so.
I I agree.
Okay, thank you. So the motion on the floor is BBB. And I say that to remind us all about the Bishop piece of it with the modification that 105 be kept in Commissioner Modis's precinct and the substitution be made for 59. I want to triple check my recollection.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes, sir, I just want to make sure I have the right ones and I'll call on you. Is that correct? John? Is that right? Okay, Commissioner, please, go ahead.
Mr. Gataza, did, did you say 59 was in Commissioner Modis's precinct?
Initially, it was, it is, yes.
It's proposed.
That's right. And the proposal, right.
It's currently in Commissioner Hernandez's precinct already.
That's right.
Right now.
So the swap on BB would be 105 back into Commissioner Precinct Three and 59 back into Commissioner Precinct One.
Okay, what, what did you say was the difference in population or?
So the 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 population between those two is 59 has 2,355 people and 105 has 2,081, so approximately 250 people difference with 105 being a little bit smaller.
So yours would be plus 200.
I'll go ahead and concede to that.
Okay, so we've got a motion. And Commissioner Modis, would you reflect the second?
Second.
I've got
Commissioner Hernandez would rather make that motion.
And does it include Bishop as a whole?
Yes, sir, I I made that.
Precinct Two.
Yes.
Yes, sir, I made that clarification.
Is that all part of them?
Yes.
One motion or do we want to vote on that separately?
I'm just one motion.
Okay.
I'm calling it the triple B because it it reminds us all about the Bishop as, piece of it as well. So the motion on the floor for the clerk, who's doing a great job following this ping pong game, is BBB, which is basically Plan BB with the exception that Bishop be kept in its entirety, the two precincts that are reflected. And and by the way, for the record, that's 36 and 102. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Two, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And also that the map reflect the change that we wish to make, which is that 105 be returned to Commissioner Modis while 59 stays in Commissioner Hernandez. And I have a motion. Yes. One, yes, to Hernandez, 105 to Modis. And the motion is on the floor with a second. If there's any, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call the vote. Do I need, I'm looking to counsel, may I call just a regular vote? I don't need a record vote for redistricting?
Take a record vote.
I'll take a record vote. It just is, I don't know if it's required, but it's always a good idea. And so Commissioner Hernandez, how do you vote, sir?
Hi.
Commissioner Modis?
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Chesney?
And this is just on the amendment, not on the overall yet, correct?
No, sir, it's it's the overall.
Oh, well, I wanted to add, I wanted to at least put on the a motion on 125. I thought this was just an, I was just amend, I was just making this as amendment to to BB. And then I was going to want to vote on BB separately. And I was, I was going to try to add 125 also, and I didn't know how that one was going to go, so. I was just, I just made a motion as an amendment to BB is what I made it as.
Right, well, forgive me, but I, we interpreted it completely different. I'm, if you don't wish to make the motion, I'm happy to have that withdrawn. But it, I bet somebody else will make that motion and so we'll have the vote at any rate.
Actually, I made the motion as an amendment, so it was my motion, right? And it was seconded, and so I would like to vote on that because I think Bishop should be together and I think Robstown should be together. But I would also then like to make a separate motion. And I realize the court may or may not support as easily, so I was trying to be like
I hear you.
letting it go that way. So, right, I made it as an amendment to BB is on the table. I made it as amendment to BB. That was my motion in a second, if someone, that's how I made it.
I'll take that. I've got a motion.
One.
Yeah.
For the Plan BB.
For the Plan BB.
No, yeah, to amend Plan BB to include the Bishop reconstruction and the Robstown reconstruction. But then I'd like to vote on the overall, the overall plan separately. So that was just an amendment to BB.
Okay. I think you've got the clerk upset.
Plan BB, it's it's very easy.
It's going to, yeah, let's just do it, just so that, okay, let's just do it. It's not going, it'll be a two-step process.
I'm going to make that as a next motion, as 125, because I don't know how the court's going to vote on this. I was trying to be a consensus builder on these, one that we all agree on.
You know what? I appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and take it. We'll make it a two-step process.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and say, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I was doing my record vote, hello.
Okay.
You've got, I've came through here, Commissioner Gonzalez said aye.
This is on the amendment.
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
Aye, yes.
Okay, myself, Ms. Sands, aye, okay? So now what we have, audience at home and those of you here, is that we have a new Plan BB, okay? And that new Plan BB is just reflected in exactly what we just said.
And I'd like to make another motion to amend BB to put all of 125 back into Precinct Four. The new BB, correct? This is second amendment to what we just amended.
I got you, I got you. And is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. All right, so
You know, if it, for discussion, I
Well, yeah, go ahead, I'm ready.
I need to know if it's going to make a difference or not.
Right. We can certainly
It it probably will make a difference in the deviation for the for the plan. If we
Right.
put all of 125
Not all, no, no, not all, whatever replaces that in 120.
So
I don't know how many you took out of 120 or gave for 120. I don't know how many you took out of 125. That was what I was thinking you were going to get numbers from
Right, right, so
From your partner.
Yeah, so we can try to put the, if 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 Mr. Rios can put up the redistricting map on the screen, we can try in real time to see what that change would do.
Okay, let's
But let me just emphasize that we're making an exchange between three districts.
Yes, sir.
Not two.
Right, no, I agree. And and that's what we want to, we want to make sure. But let's, you know, we're all here, I guess we're all ready to stay a little longer, let's see it. Okay, no, no harm here in in taking a look at it. And now you are acting like Cornacki, so let's look at it.
So, Mr. Rios, you've already put 105 back into three and moved 59 back into one?
Correct.
Okay.
That one's passed, I just need to see the 125.
No, I understand. So the reason I'm asking is because it changes the numbers.
Okay.
The population numbers as we proceed. So now, if you would
My bad, sorry.
And and so Commissioner Chesney, just so that I understand, you're going to want all of 120 in into three?
Where would it come from, three?
Sure, so right now it's divided between three and four. It used to be in, all in four.
Gone, three, 120.
One, so we would move all of 120, Mr. Galondo, into precinct three?
Okay, all of 120?
Yes, so right now it's divided?
Just want to see.
Actually, I think it's pretty neat.
I just want to, yeah, it'd be kind of, it's kind of nice to do one of these like this.
One second.
I agree.
May not work.
I'm not even, yeah, you never know.
It may not.
Give him a chance here.
120 is the one that's split, correct?
120 is split up up near the bay, right?
Up near the bay, okay.
Kind of. I had trouble finding it, too, don't feel bad.
Can you bring it to it?
Right there.
You keep moving it.
There it is, they're right there.
I was trying to
So you're going to move all of that into three, currently it's split.
It's really cool how they do this.
And can you show us what the new population is for precinct three?
Do you see that?
Yes, so it's now at 1.6?
What is that?
1.16.
1.16, I'm sorry, yes.
Deviation.
Which, what?
The top to bottom deviation would be 2.6, right? But now we're going to move to precinct
125.
125. And we're going to try to move that line up as much as we can. So we might as well start with putting it all back in Four?
I don't, again, I don't know, because I don't know how many you, you know what I mean? I don't know how many you took, but sure? And then we can back it down or something?
Exactly.
Yeah.
But you do, but it'll still be split? If we back it down?
But I'll keep more, and I won't, I won't, again, I won't get 120, so I-
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, well, we'll take a look.
Which is better than, I just don't like splits.
One split versus two splits?
Right. Which-
But we'll see what the-
No, I mean, I get it.
Let's look at 125.
That's 125, correct?
Yes. And can you show us the populations of Two and, so our deviation is now of 11%, uh, twelve, 12% by doing that? So let's, uh, Marty, if you can start taking population, start splitting 125 again, starting at the top part of the precinct and moving it back into, um-
And while he's doing that, you can see why one precinct makes such a big difference. So we've answered the question of why can't it stay together? Now we're gonna see what slice, if, you know, could make a difference, I'm-
Because you can definitely, I would think, take a slice out of that, and again, end up with only one split precinct.
Yeah.
Gotta be a way to do that.
Oh, crap, or two.
So you need to go to the block in 125 and start moving the northern blocks into Two?
I understand.
Thank you.
Into?
Into Two?
Yes.
Twenty-five.
Start at the most northern end that you can, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garcia, you're just waiting to say I told you so, aren't you?
No.
I'm just playing.
It's just that he really understands this process.
No, I know, it's not, yeah.
Can you show us what the population is now that you've done that?
Oh, two.
I guess the question would be, how many did you put back into 120? That would be where you would probably start with.
Well, we should've taken down the numbers.
Right. How many, whatever you put back into 120 should've started with that gross number for, for 125.
Just this time, write them down, because they're up, they're up there.
I thought they were, I'm sorry, my bad.
So now we're, uh, we've reduced it to 4.3 and still, uh, right at 10%. Okay, so we need to add more. And by the way, did you guys save this plan before you started making changes?
So, so, excuse me, so Brent, you see the deviation at 3803? Brent, you see the, see that deviation at 3803? So before, when we put it all in, it was like 4,900.
Well, the problem is-
I'm just saying, if you're working on the numbers-
Problem is, two shrunk. The rest of them are pretty even. What, how did, how did two shrink?
Because that's what we're saying, is that every time you move that one, it's moving two, and it's gonna move three.
To the neighborhood.
Every time you move that precinct, even the sliver, it's changing, this one and this one. They're all interrelated. And that's why the holistic approach is the best approach. But it's a toughie in the sense of, that's why you know your density is high. You don't even have to ask what your population is, because that map just showed it to you. It went from 4,900 to 3,800 with a pretty big, you can do it one more time and see how it hap, see what it- But you're pretty gonna be, you're gonna almost be back to a split on the third slice.
There'll be a split, all right.
Oh, because you took all of the 120, oh, I see. So you're putting, but you're putting stuff back into Two right now with this 125. So that should, you're gonna, you could-
Yes.
Okay, so it should, it'll build back up.
Those numbers are gonna go like that.
Right.
Right.
It's just a matter of how many. I gotcha, so.
And, and just so you know, if, for those of you who wanna know where 125 is, that's Airline, um, it's, it's the area you know is dense. We just had some granular, let's see, I, I lost it. Thank you.
So now we're, Marty, now we're at 8% deviation?
Looks like it, yes, sir.
Okay, so let's, let's add a little bit more to Two.
You pretty much have to take this whole block with its ancillary blocks, right? So-
Right. So that's the other thing, is the, the census geography?
I get it, yeah. And then, you know, once, and once we get the-
Hey, but at least you've, you've run the gauntlet. I mean, I think it's cool, because, because I think that, that the, what the public want, I mean, had we not done this, then you leave here going, hey, Chesney asked for something reasonable, and we didn't give it. But this indicates that that particular precinct has to be split in order to make the population under that 10%.
It's a huge precinct, I get it.
You know, that's, but that's only seen right here.
Well, and, and what, once we get the-
Depends how much, too.
Once we get the numbers right, we still have to make sure that the rest of it balances, too.
Commissioner Chesney, you were correct. And now we have a deviation of 2.6%. But we had to go down that low. And you only have one precinct split.
And, and the rest of it balances the way it's supposed to as well.
So the four precincts are up, and the top-to-bottom deviation is
Yeah.
Which is where we wanted to be.
Very good.
And then do the rest of the numbers add up?
So the minority, so now we can see, because we have these tables up, we can see what the minority numbers were when we made the changes that we did. And, um, the, uh, minority numbers are, for Precinct One, it's 67%. For Precinct Two, it's 71%. For Precinct Three, it's 68%, and that's Hispanic numbers. Uh, each of them has, uh, some number of African-Americans.
And what's Four? What was the?
And Four is 39.3%.
Thirty-nine.
And what's interesting is that under BB, you were at 43%.
So with these changes that we-
But he didn't add in the, he just, that's just the Hispanic numbers.
That's correct.
So what's the total number?
The, the total number is forty, um, so you add 39 and Four, you're at 42, 3% or so minority.
Right.
And there, the minority districts are all over 70% minority.
And then, um, and then the Republican, Democrat?
That's not gonna, that's not gonna change with the changes that we made.
Yeah, those are your-
So we can't see it on this program, we're gonna have to run that in the morning and get it to you. But my guess, based on all of the things that we've done, is that it's gonna be in the same range that we've been talking about. But if, if this is the, this is, these are the changes that, that the commissioners want, you will have a constitutional plan, and it will be one that's fair to the minority community.
Did Bishop get put together?
Bishop?
Yep.
Let me, um, let me, so that's a, that's a good question. So Marty, if you could go to the western end of the, uh, plan, we need to put, we need to make one more change.
Thirty-six and 102.
And we're gonna put 36 into One, into Two, I'm sorry.
Into Two?
102.
102.
102.
No, 36 goes into Precinct Two.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah, 36 and 102.
Yeah, and 102 goes in.
102's already there.
It's already there.
Okay, yeah, but you're gonna, you're gonna-
You're gonna bring 36 back to you. Okay? What, see what that does?
And the deviation is, the top-to-bottom deviation is 1.16 plus 1.49? So 2.64?
That's pretty solid.
Pretty close.
Same thing, I mean.
Is that right, Marty?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So this plan, this plan that's up on the screen has then incorporated all the changes that you've asked us to make on Plan BB. And those, and you see the numbers in front of you of what that does. What you don't have is the political data. We'll get that to you in the morning, but, you know, bet you dollars to donuts, it's gonna be just like all the others.
Okay, can you hold that up, and let me just look at it real quick, too? Because I wanna make sure everybody in the public gets to see this, too.
Which part? Which one do you want her to, you want her to?
No, no, that's good, the numbers are-
Just keep it up on the screen.
Okay, so make a motion.
We have applause from Chris Garcia.
I know, he'll have to change it. Well, thank you, Chris.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Thanks.
And just so that we're clear, 105 was moved into Three. 59 was moved back into One, correct, Marty?
Yes, sir.
And then we just made the changes on the western end of the county. And we made the changes with regard to-
Thirty-six.
Precinct One-
One-
25 and-
120.
And 120.
59 goes into One, correct?
Yes.
Say that again?
59 goes into One.
That's correct.
Yeah, and you've done that, that, it, it's there.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you can save this, Marty, as Plan BBB?
Okay.
Modified?
Modified.
Plan BBB modified.
So do I-
Do I make a motion, we accept the plan?
Well, hold on, I think I need to do the, the 20, like we did the last one, so I'm gonna make-
You can, we've got a plan now.
Thank you, I'd like to make the motion to-
However you do it.
To, uh, change, um-
Second.
Sorry.
Brent, just say that you're amending the plan again.
Yes, I'm amending the plan again.
Plan BB, one more time.
One more time to, to do what you just did, no, to, um-
Yeah, that's fine. To go BBB.
No, okay, to, uh, play it. Sorry, I was over 3:00 AM, guys, I'm a little brain-dead. But, um, one, to, to amend the plan again, to put 120 whole again, and to take a portion of 125 out of Four and into-
Two.
Two. Is that clear?
Clear.
Got it.
Second.
An amazing process, right? Two, no, Two.
No, Two.
No.
That's, that-
120 back into Three, that's right.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. That's right, back into Three, sorry.
So one, so let's, if you don't mind, we'll double-check that again, but I think that's correct. So just to go over that last modification, 120 stays whole in Precinct Four.
Three.
I'm sorry, Precinct Three, and-
Small victories, small victories.
And 125?
Partial of Two.
Modified.
Is modified as, as shown.
Partial in Two.
So long. I'll miss you.
So you do have a, yeah, you have a somewhat of a split there.
So we have, we end up with one split precinct instead of two, that's great.
Okay. All right, so, um, I've got a motion and a second. And again, I'm gonna take the record vote, because this has to do with changing the plan one more time, so that we'll have something to vote on, okay? And I say a plan, I mean a map. Commissioner Chesney?
What are we voting on this time?
You just changed, you voted, you motioned to change Plan BB.
Yes, on the amendment, yes, on the amendment.
Uh, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Modus?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so now we have a Plan BB. We have other plans, too, but now you know what the new Plan BB looks like tonight. And, um, and so with that, commissioners, with your indulgence, however, after having over three hours of, of opportunity for public comment, including a public hearing that was held, and a tremendous amount of discussion, as well as iterations from the team from San Antonio, I would like to, uh, ask if there is a motion to adopt an order, and a plan is reflected here tonight on establishing new Commissioner Precinct boundaries? And if so, could you make the motion as to what that plan is?
Accept the Plan BBB?
Thank you. And this is for the purposes of redistricting? And is there a second for the new BBB?
Second.
A motion and a second, I'll take that record vote. Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Modus?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
Aye, with explanation. I just wanna put on the record that I, I think this was a fascinating process. I think it was incredibly open, incredibly candid. Uh, none of us got what we wanted. I, I actually sat here and thought about how to vote very seriously, because I, I think there was an easier way, but because I really feel like this was a pretty darn fair process at the end, and I appreciate the court's indulgence on allowing me to do what I was able to do. I'm not, I don't love it, but I don't know that everybody else does either, so I'm, I'm okay for now.
Thank you.
Nobody gets 100%.
And I, and I think the important part is, and I'm sorry, Judge, I mean-
It's all right.
I think the important part is, we maintained what we set out to maintain, which was minority districts, which was demographics in, in the, in the three minority precincts, which was Republican, Democrat breakdown, and which was a very, very constitutional deviation. So I think these are extremely solid maps, and, and I, and I would like to see these final numbers, because I know we have a, a meeting set still for Friday in case of emergency. But I would like to see those numbers to make sure that they, they mirror what you just said, and I know they will, but I still would like to see them, so that's, that's it.
I'd like to vote aye, Ms. Sands, and, uh-
I'm sorry, I thought you voted aye.
And, that's all right, and, and it passes 5-0. You have maps, Noises County. You should be very, very happy. I also want to say that it's my, uh, job to make sure that we get everything that we just talked about on our website. Uh, I'll get new, we are closed tomorrow, so I won't be able to do it till Friday. We'll get new posters downstairs, okay? I would even like to see if, if the court would allow, I'm certain we have the dollars to do it. Could we also maybe take out an ad in the paper that showcases the maps?
Great idea.
And, um, and I'll think of any, you know, as, as my brain continues to move on messaging, we'll, we'll work towards that. And, um, remember that there's an opportunity to gather again very soon, so there's always comments that can be made. But, um, you know what's interesting is, um, everyone always thinks this is so hard. I think we just proved that it's really not. Not if you're willing to listen, and not if you're willing to compromise for one man, one vote, or one woman, one vote, as Sylvia would want me to say. I think that it's a, it's a really important exercise in, um, hiring good people who have the right experience and credentials. I'm sorry? And making sure that you really care about what you say you care about. And we did it all. It may be imperfect, but it is, um, it's a good, it's a very good, it's a very good m, map going forward.